Welcome, everyone. I, Council President Hunt, call the November 5th, 2020 Council Study Session to order. Before we move on to tonight's agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. On March 6th, the mayor issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24th, the governor issued proclamation 20-28 prohibiting meetings that fall under the Open Public Meetings Act. The proclamation has been extended through November 9th. Today's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting or make comments. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you may make comments after the staff presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda item. If there is anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments but did not sign up, please press star three on your phone now or under the later comment periods, and we will call on you using the last two digits of your phone number. And I will also be sharing a summary of any comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda items. I would like to now take a roll call of the council members in attendance. Please say "here" when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Long button, here.
Thanks. Councilmember Martz.
Here.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray.
Here.
And Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Thanks, everyone. In addition, the following city staff and presenters are participating in tonight's meeting. City Administrator Wally Bobquist, Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder, Finance Director Beth Goldberg, Management Analyst Jeanne Paul, and City Clerk Tina Eggers. Other city staff may also be in attendance and on hand for questions. And tonight as well, the city's lobbyist Shelley Heldur is also joining us. For those members of the public on the call, welcome. And lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently, state your name each time before speaking, mute your microphone when not speaking, and if you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. All right. So first, we will have a general comment period. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated its desire to speak?
Thank you. We have two speakers. I'm uncertain if Cory Walters is on the line yet, but Cory, excuse me, Cory, if you are on the line, you can unmute. And again.
Can you hear me?
Hi, Cory. Yes, you have the floor.
Hi. Oh, great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Cory Walters, Executive Director of the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank. And I just want to share a little history about the food bank's efforts in finding new space. So in October 2019, I spoke with, at a city council meeting, about the food bank's need for more space. And at that time, we were preparing, we were proposing to tear down our current building and rebuild on the site. Jeff Clark happened to be at that meeting. He's Eastside Fire and Rescue by our chief. And after hearing about the food bank needs, he reached out to us to discuss what it might look like for the food bank to move into District 10, Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters at 175 Newport Way. And so for the last year, we've been discussing what a collaborative, shared space might look like between EFER and the food bank and potentially other community partners at the headquarters on Newport Way. So some of the challenges the food bank has been facing with their current space is we've been in our space for at least 25 years, and in the last 10 years, we've increased our outputs through creative feeding and case management programs. And 10 years ago, we only had a clothing bank and a couple of programs, but we did not have a self-select distribution grocery store for our food bank. We only had three employees and our monthly average food intake was 60,000 pounds per month, and our operating budget, get ready for this, was only $380,000. Today, we have a large self-serve, self-select grocery store, a fully operating self-select delivery program, year-round youth feeding programs, expanded case management programs. We have 10 employees. We rely on about 250 volunteers a month. And on an average month, we're bringing in over 100,000 pounds of food. So as we've developed new creative programs to greater meet the needs in our community, we are drastically growing out of space in our current building. So there are many benefits to collaborating with Eastside Fire and Rescue. The food bank has actively been looking to relocate for over eight years now, and the headquarters building has all the right components for a shared space model. It's big enough to meet the food bank needs as well as Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters. And together, Eastside Fire and Rescue and the food bank are developing a mobile integrated healthcare program where our two programs are coming together to serve community members in a new and creative way. And both of our organizations are vision expanding our partnerships and collaborating to meet even more needs in our community and to do it in a really strategic, thoughtful way. We think together, we can tap into more resources. So today, our needs are definitely growing and changing because of COVID. We did a lot of research in 2019 compared to 2018, and at that time, we believed that we were only currently serving about 20% of the addressable market in our service area, even though our special program numbers have increased by 40% year after year for the last five years. For example, our groceries-to-go program started about five years ago, and when it was new, we served about 30 individuals, and today, we're serving over 200 households every other week. So we have a huge increase in our touch points with community members and needs. So today, my ask is that the Issaquah City Council consider supporting a capital request in the state legislative agenda that will provide state funding for the food bank expansion so that we can do the super important work that we are doing today and additional work we plan to do in the future. A request of $1 million for a capital expansion progress would be very much appreciated. I know many of you have heard this from me many times before, but I think we finally found a good plan. So thank you for your consideration, and I hope this is added to your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, has there been anybody else who has signed up to speak?
Yes. Connie Marsh, if you can unmute. I'll check in again with Connie.
Yeah, it just takes a while for it to unmute.
That's right. Thank you. You have the floor.
Connie Marsh, up on Squawk Mountain. So legislative agenda and the Eastside Fire and Rescue, mine is a little shorter presentation, though I will say that was fascinating, and maybe a full-fledged presentation is in order for the prior public speaker. The fire planning seems like it should be on the city's legislative agenda. As I don't think it's entirely Eastside Fire and Rescue's responsibility to lobby the legislature for a holistic sort of fire protection plan in our drying forest system. But the main reason I am talking today is about the budget item for the Title 18 work plan. And I sort of laughed when I was talking to someone about it, and they said, "Oh, my gosh, $500,000, that's a lot of money." And I said, "Well, let's see, for the last 25 years, I have been looking at the same Title 18." So because I've been watching too much CNN for an election, I did a calculation, and it's like $20,000 a year. So $500,000 is peanuts if we can get a functioning plan and reduce the legal costs that we spend protecting that plan. So I didn't exactly understand the efficacy of the work plan, but I'm just going to speak about the actual dollar amount. Totally, totally worth it, if not more money. And then what we need to do is we need to figure out how with these big lifts of code updates, that we systematically change them periodically, and we put funds aside for the ability to have enough money to change them when it's appropriate instead of waiting 25 years to do an overhaul. Because as we can see from the last three years of lawsuits, it doesn't work very well when we don't plan in advance. So I would ask to add to this budget, or at least a budget discussion, of a set aside for code updates in a systematic manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk, has anyone further signed up to speak?
There are none. Thank you.
Thank you. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them very seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. So thank you very much for those comments this evening. And now we can begin with the first of our two agenda items, and that is ID 0729, the 2021 Legislative Agenda, which will be presented by Jeanne Paul, Management Analyst, as well as Shelley Heldur, lobbyist. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Council President Hunt. Good evening, members of the council. I'm Jeanne Paul, Management Analyst in the Executive Office, and Shelley Heldur, our Senior Government Affairs Consultant from Gordon Thomas Honeywell, is also with us this evening. Together, we'll be presenting on the state legislative agenda for 2021. There are two primary reasons for this presentation tonight. First, we'd like to provide information, and this will include an overview of the 2021 Legislative Session and the development of this proposed agenda. The second reason for the presentation is to seek your feedback on the proposed agenda. Now, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Shelley, who will begin with the overview of the upcoming session.
Great. Well, good evening, Council President Hunt and councilmembers. As Jeanne stated, I am Shelley Heldur, your State Government Affairs Consultant at Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs. It is good to be with you all this evening, even though it is in a virtual format. So I'm going to start by providing some background information on the upcoming legislative session. I'll briefly review the state's budgets, and then we'll talk about the city's draft legislative priorities. Over the last several months, there have been rumors of a potential special session where legislators would be called back to Olympia to address a number of pressing issues, most importantly, the budget deficit as a result of COVID-19. However, with the release of the September revenue forecast, which was slightly more optimistic than the previous forecast, the budget shortfall is not as large as previously anticipated. So it is increasingly unlikely that there will be a special session, which means the next time the legislature will convene will be for the 2021 regular session, starting on January 11th. It will be a long session lasting 105 days, and it will be the first year of the biennium. So the legislature's primary goal will be to adopt new budgets. There are ongoing discussions about the format of the upcoming session and how to protect the health of legislators and legislative staff given COVID-19. So far, it sounds like the House is planning to hold all their committee meetings and floor votes virtually. The Senate, since they have half as many members, are planning to hold all of their committee meetings virtually, but are exploring how to allow some senators to be there in person for floor votes. And others would vote virtually, and then they would rotate who is on campus in person. The details are all still in flex, but we are confident that this will be a unique session, to say the least, and the virtual nature will make it difficult for the legislature, or more difficult for the legislature, to pass complex and controversial policies, especially if they haven't been well worked in advance of the legislative session. Although Tuesday's election results are not yet certified, it is safe to say that Democrats will maintain their majority in the House and the Senate. Was never really up for a question. Where things stand now, the Democrats may pick up two seats in the House and potentially one in the Senate. There's a very close race in the 10th Legislative District that could determine whether there's a pickup or whether it remains neutral. Taking into account open seats and potential incumbent losses, there could be up to six new senators and 18 new representatives. The focus of the 2021 Legislative Session will be on addressing the shortfall in the existing operating and transportation budgets and adopting three new biennial budgets. There will be limited capacity to tackle policy issues, but we do expect to see dozens of bills related to police reform, some proposals to address housing and rental assistance for when the eviction moratorium ends, and efforts to bring about more racial equity. Next slide. Before we dive into the city's legislative priorities, I thought it may be helpful to have a quick refresher on each of the state's budgets. So as a reminder, the state adopts biennial budgets, the operating, capital, and transportation budget. Current budgets expire on June 30th of 2021, and then the new budget cycle starts on July 1st, 2021. The operating budget funds all of the state agencies. It's the budget most often referred to in local news. It is the largest of the three state budgets. Based on the September revenue forecast, the operating budget has a shortfall of roughly $4 billion over the next four years. And one of the reasons for resisting a special session is the prospect of federal assistance and not wanting to make any drastic changes before knowing what type of relief may come from the feds. We have heard from budget writers and many Democrat legislators that the budget solutions that were used as a result of this recession, which is a purely cuts approach, will not work this time around, and there is a growing desire to identify new revenue. Some of the revenue sources being considered are a capital gains tax and expansion of sin taxes such as marijuana and liquor tax. Next slide. The capital budget is the smallest of the three budgets. It funds public and nonprofit construction projects. It is typically a $2.5 to $3 billion budget funded primarily through the sale of bonds. This is the budget where the city previously received $3 million for the Opportunity Center. The capital budget will be the budget with the most opportunity for securing a direct appropriation in 2021. Projects that stimulate the economy by being shovel-ready and immediately result in construction jobs, or projects that focus on assistance for vulnerable populations, will compete best. I'll get into it in a moment, but right now, there is no proposed capital budget request on the city's list of legislative priorities. Next slide. The last of the three budgets is the transportation budget, and it has reduced revenue from a decline in gas tax, ferry ticket sales, and toll revenues from the pandemic. I'm sure you've all heard that the Supreme Court ruled Initiative 976 unconstitutional. So the funds that were previously set aside by the state are now able to be used. Unfortunately, the decline in tax revenue from COVID is greater than the revenues that were frozen from 976. So there is still a shortfall in the transportation budget. Additionally, there's a recognition on both sides of the aisle that the legislature needs to do something to address car tabs, or at a minimum, the valuation system that's used to determine car tabs in the Sound Transit region. However, the Chair of the House Transportation Committee, Representative Jake Fai, has said he does not intend to make changes that impact local car tab fees, which I know Issaquah does not currently have, but many other cities do. And even before there was a shortfall in the transportation budget back in during the 2019 session, discussions around a new revenue package began and have been continuing ever since. Senator Steve Hops, the Chair of the Senate Transportation Committee, has developed a proposal he refers to as Forward Washington. Representative Jake Fai held listening sessions with a variety of stakeholders over the last several months, and he plans to release his proposal sometime in December. Senator Rebecca Saldana, who's the Vice Chair of the Senate Transportation Committee, is also developing a proposal. And Senator Curtis King, the ranking member on the Senate Transportation Committee, has shared that with three Democrat proposals out there, he is inclined to develop one to ensure that Republican values are included in the discussion. In all three of the Democrat proposals, climate policy will be a cornerstone. The specifics of what that policy looked like, how much is invested back into the transportation system versus other areas, all of those details are still being developed and will be heavily negotiated. There is clearly the need for a new revenue package, and there is a will as well. The, again, virtual nature of the upcoming session will make passage of a package more difficult. A new package is difficult no matter what the climate is like, and so the virtual nature will make it a little bit more challenging. Next slide. Transitioning now into some reminders when considering the city's legislative priorities. The first is to remain focused. We always advise clients to be focused on just a few priorities since that increases your chances of success, but that will be even more important this coming session when the legislature will have limited bandwidth for the issues they can address. For policy issues that the city cares about but don't rise to the level of being a high priority, we do have the policy manual document, which Jeanne will review in a moment. We recommend developing a biennial legislative agenda to align with the state's biennial budget cycle. If an item is accomplished in the first year of the biennium, then we update the priorities to reflect that. This year in particular, we recommend that the city's priorities focus on capital and transportation requests. Not necessarily exclusively, but that's where the focus should be. As I mentioned earlier, the capital budget is the budget with the most opportunity. It doesn't necessarily mean a funding request would be guaranteed. The right project still has to compete well, but it is the only budget not facing a shortfall. And even though the transportation budget has a shortfall, because the legislature is considering a revenue package, we also recommend including the city's top transportation priorities. Transportation projects that are competitive at a statewide level are those that are on or directly connected to an interstate or state highway. It's important to be wise with the city's political capital, or in other words, to prioritize the issues that have the greatest impact to the city. And then lastly, it is, it's good to have consistency with previous legislative agendas since oftentimes it takes several years to accomplish a priority. It's important for legislators to know that the issue remains a priority for the city. Next slide. So with all of that in mind, let's transition to reviewing the city's draft priorities for the upcoming biennium. A copy of the city's draft legislative agenda is included in your council packet this evening. The first item on the agenda is a request for $285 million for the widening of State Route 18 from Issaquah Hobart Road to Raging River. The widening of this corridor has been a priority for the city for a few years, and in the 2019 session, the 5th District legislators secured $25 million for design, engineering, and land acquisition for this project. The request for $285 million is for the construction phase. Earlier this year, the Joint Transportation Committee of the Legislature was directed to complete a statewide transportation needs assessment. The report highlighted six anchor investments throughout the state. And anchor investments were defined as high-cost, high-impact projects that exceed the cost for any single region to fund independently and are important to achieving statewide transportation goals. The widening of State Route 18 was one of the six anchor investments identified in the report, which is a testament to the advocacy efforts of the region and the region's legislators. This is definitely beneficial to our efforts, but it's by no means a guarantee that the funding will be included in the next package. The Southeast Area Legislative Transportation Coalition, or CLTC, continues to have this request as their top legislative priority. Having a regional coalition like CLTC that is all pulling in the same direction is incredibly helpful and really crucial for a funding request of this size. The next, the next item on the agenda, the second transportation-related request, is for $3.4 million for the pre-design and environmental documentation of an additional over/under crossing of I-90 in Issaquah. Both this item and the SR-18 priority are carryover from the previous legislative agenda. However, this request is slightly updated from last year. It is for $3.4 million rather than $3 million. And we have specified that the preferred timing of the funding would be in 2024. Typically, it doesn't make sense to ask for funding for a project that's outside the timing of the upcoming biennium. However, because the legislature is considering a transportation revenue package and packages schedule funding into the future, it is possible for the funding to be allocated in the '23, '25 biennium if a package is adopted. So in this case, it makes sense. And in some instances, requesting funding in the future can be a way to be more competitive since most projects are requesting funding in the upcoming biennium. Next slide. So the topic of fiscal sustainability is also a carryover from last year's legislative agenda, but there are a few changes worth noting. First, we were successful in the 2020 session with having the legislature extend the streamlined sales tax mitigation payments, but through a technical error, the funding was eliminated through the governor's veto. The SST program is funded through the operating budget, which, as I mentioned earlier, has a shortfall. So this will be a challenging request, but the legislature just affirmed their support for the program. And there is a case to be made for the inequity that resulted from the state's implementation of destination-based sales tax sourcing and honoring the commitment to support the communities that were negatively impacted. Because there are so few cities that are impacted by the SST program, it's important that the cities who care about the program make it a priority. The second item under fiscal sustainability is an acknowledgement that without an adjustment to the 1% property tax cap, cities will continue to face fiscal challenges. Removing the 1% property tax cap and replacing it with a limit that's tied to inflation and population growth has been a local government priority for many years and is being considered as a sound cities association priority for the upcoming session. It will be a challenging year for this request, but given the impact it has on the city's budget, it is worth continuing to elevate as a priority. Before I turn it over to Jeanne to review the policy manual updates, I do want to note again that the draft agenda in front of you this evening does not include a capital budget request. And the reason for that is, in working with staff, we did not identify a city need that aligned with the restrictions of the capital budget. So as a reminder, the capital budget, the capital budget projects cannot be anything transportation-related. And the reason for that is, in working with staff, we did not identify a city need that aligned with the restrictions of the capital budget. So as a reminder, the capital budget, the capital budget projects cannot be anything transportation-related, and it's best if they're visible projects that have full community support. It's important that a project seeking state capital funds is ready to proceed, so that the funding doesn't sit unused for several years, and that if less than the requested amount is received, a usable portion of the project is still able to be completed. To not jeopardize the city's reputation, it is better to not have a capital budget project, even though that's where the greatest opportunity is this year, than to have one that's not fully baked. I wanted to flag this for the council in case there is a city project that should be considered. But in cases where the city doesn't have a project that lines up with the restrictions of the capital budget, it is worth considering whether it makes sense to support a capital budget request of a city partner on a project that would benefit the overall community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jean to talk about the policy manual.
Thank you, Shelley. The second part of the legislative agenda is the policy manual, as Shelley indicated. And this is the document that details the city's positions for the full spectrum of issues that may arise during the legislative session. While the majority of the manual remains the same, the administration is proposing a number of additions for 2021. The first proposed addition is concerned both transportation and operating revenue tools. For transportation, there is a statement supporting options being discussed that would be in addition to existing revenue tools for transportation benefit districts. On the operating revenue side, the administration is recommending a position that supports more progressive tools, such as a graduated real estate excise tax. And at the same time, the administration recommends monitoring new proposals like the payroll tax proposed in 2020 to ensure they do not erode local taxing authority. The second group of proposed policy manual additions pertain to COVID-19 recovery. For recovery in the community, there are statements that support tools to encourage business recovery and support for the eviction resolution program. That program will facilitate early resolution of disputes when the eviction moratorium eventually ends. The other statements pertain to the city as an employer and utility operator. Those statements support protecting public employee retirement benefits from mandatory work reductions and support for tools to make cities whole from overdue utility bills. The third proposed addition to the manual is a recommendation to monitor statewide policing reforms to ensure the city retains local control over the law enforcement policy decisions that meet the needs of our community. The fourth group of proposed additions relate to environmental stewardship. Two existing policy positions have been broadened to support the electrification of vehicle fleets and the core provisions of the Clean Energy Transformation Act. The administration is also proposing monitoring legislation that will facilitate the transition away from fossil fuels through the electrification of buildings and transportation systems. Finally, there are a number of funding requests made by third parties that would benefit the city. First, the State Recreation and Conservation Office will request budget funding for the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program, where the city has a grant application for $2.6 million for the Harvey Manning Park expansion. Second, the Department of Ecology has already asked for $750,000 in their next budget to continue working on characterizing and designing the pilot cleanup for PFAS chemicals in the Issaquah Valley. Third, Arts Washington has requested funding in the next capital budget that would provide $24,000 for the Issaquah Creative District. Finally, the Main Street Tax Credit Incentive, which benefits both the city and the Downtown Issaquah Association, is advocating for more direct funding to all Main Street organizations. In terms of timing and next steps, the administration will incorporate your feedback from tonight and return for approval of the legislative agenda at the December 7 council meeting. The final details of the virtual legislative breakfast meeting are still being determined, but it will recur on either December 8 or 11, from 8 to 9 a.m. And finally, the legislative session begins on January 11, or January 11, 2021. So that concludes our presentation, and now we're seeking your feedback. In terms of direction for the administration, there are two primary questions we'd like to have answered tonight. The first question is, are the priorities that we have identified clear and correct? And the second is, are there other positions that you would like to add to the policy manual?
Thank you. So first, we will have some, if there are council questions, Q and A, and then we will also call for public comment in the event that there are any individuals on the line, and then we will have council discussion. So are there any questions that council would have? And first question is from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. Can you tell me more about the Main Street Tax Credit Program? Particularly, are the BNO or Public Utility Tax Credits that would be given out something that would cause us to lose revenue, or is it BNO taxes at the state level that this is talking about?
I can jump in and answer that. Yeah, so that is the state portion of the BNO tax. It doesn't impact city revenues. It's a tool that was established as a way to essentially allow businesses to direct where their taxes are going. So they're able to pay, to pay their taxes, get a credit, and have that credit go towards the Downtown Issaquah Association, and to have those taxes invested in projects within their own community. Thank you.
Next question is from Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you, this is Councilmember DeMichele. Could you just tell me a little bit more about, the statement is that we would support the eviction resolution program. Are we looking for funding for that program, or is that simply a request that the legislature approve that program? Exactly what are we asking here?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So that program is run through the judicial branch. So there are specific, I believe they do have a specific funding request. I don't know what the dollar amount is. Part of the challenge with that program is it can't really get up and running officially until the eviction moratorium ends. So really, our statement is that we support the concept, we support the fact that there needs to be, there needs to be support for both landlords and tenants when the moratorium ends. And this is just one of the proposals out there that will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Shelley. I have really enjoyed tonight's presentation so far from you and Jean. I have a question about the last bullet item under affordable housing that says Issaquah will monitor the implementation of recent changes to the Residential Landlord-Tenant Act for its impact on both landlords and tenants. And I, what you said, what was said in the presentation is that there are potential considerations by the legislature of changes to that act related to evictions. Did I hear that correctly?
So what I mentioned in the presentation is specifically related to COVID-19. There's a recognition that there needs to be support for tenants and landlords as the eviction moratorium comes to an end. We don't know when that is. But the reference in the policy manual, that was included back last year, so it's not a new addition this year, but it's in reference to the update to that act that passed in 2019. I'm not aware of any specific proposals to change that act outside of basically changes to address the current circumstance.
So I was wondering, and this is a question for the administration to consider and council members, and that is, if we could potentially change this to say, not just recent changes, but also that we will monitor recent and any proposed changes? Because any eviction, if there's any eviction-related legislation in the Residential Landlord-Tenant Act, I think that we would want to monitor that as well. We just simply don't know what the legislature is going to do. I did recall that one of the last meetings that we had about rental assistance and mediation, the city's involvement in that, there was talk about encouraging the legislature to take up those issues. I don't see that we are directly encouraging that in here to change any statewide policies so that this isn't addressed, or so that it's less likely to be addressed on a piecemeal basis by, you know, smaller cities and counties. So anyway, I would request that we think about that, and would welcome any comments from council members or your feedback, Shelley, and then also considering revising that last bullet item under affordable housing to add in any proposed changes to legislation. That was sort of a comment, but also a question, I guess.
Okay. So Councilmember Goodman, was that, was that a question then? Would you like Shelley to comment on that?
Sure.
Okay. Shelley, thanks.
I think that's an excellent point. We do know that there will be legislation introduced. There have been, there are kind of two different work groups going on right now, separate from what's happening in the judicial branch. And so I don't know what the specific legislation will look like. So you're correct in saying we just don't know what the legislature is going to propose. So including some language about, you know, and proposed changes may make sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall has a comment.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. And feel free to let me know if you'd rather like me to wait until all the questions are wrapped up.
I think in this case, it would be fine.
Okay, thanks. Just a quick statement from my colleagues on the council and administration. As most of you already know, in addition to serving here on the council, I also work for the state legislature. And according to the legislative ethics, according to legislative ethics rulemaking, state legislative staff aren't allowed to advocate the state legislature. So I've been asked to recuse myself from discussing and voting on this topic, except to give this brief statement. So I just wanted to make that clear to all of you, and if any of my colleagues or members out in the community have any questions, I'd be happy to connect offline. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Question from Councilmember Mart.
Yeah, and I think it's maybe a bit of a cousin in a way to Councilmember, by the way, this is Councilmember Mart. Kind of a cousin, the Councilmember Goodman's question, because it really, it has to do with sort of monitoring versus being more active, passive voice versus active voice. And it's, but it's a different topic, and it's around statewide policing reform. So cousin here that the administration is recommending a position of monitoring these reforms to ensure the city retains local control over the law enforcement policy decisions that meet the needs of the community. I find that a little disappointingly limited. We have an amazing Police Accountability, Equity, and Human Services Action Plan that I think we should be really justifiably proud of, that we so quickly responded to what we are seeing with both tactical and strategic solutions. And I'm just wondering if there's any, I feel like we have such a depth and breadth in there to then look to things going on at the state level and merely say, we're going to monitor and make sure they don't take our authority away. That's certainly necessary, but I'm not sure it's sufficient. So I'm wondering, and I guess, I guess this is a question for City Administrator Bob Kowits. Is there any mechanism where we could tie our Police Accountability, Equity, and Human Services Action Plan to things that we might want to see happen at the state legislature? We have a document that's gone through review and that we've approved, and some, because I know that there will be things that will occur at the state legislature that will dovetail with some of the things that we care about around reporting and accountability and training and some of those areas.
If I may, Council President Hunt, Councilmember Mart, I think we certainly can take a little bit more active stance, as you were making your comments, and I was trying to formulate in my head what that might be. I think there's going to be a lot of proposals before the legislature, and Ms. Heldrich maybe can help me with what she has heard specifically about that. I don't know necessarily that we are in a position to take a leadership role in any of those things. But at the same time, perhaps once there is a collection of proposals, it would be important to review those proposals, and then at that point, select which ones we might want to be a little bit more active on. If I may, if I could ask Ms. Heldrich just to provide any insights or thoughts she has as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's an excellent point. And because you all have done the work internally to identify what those important reforms are, I think expanding the statement to say something along the lines of, and we support reforms at the statewide level that align with the city's police accountability and equal justice plan, I don't know if I got that right, but something along those lines, so that we are supporting statewide changes that you all have already identified as being important locally.
I would like to see a statement like that. I would submit to my fellow council members, something like that, to tie something that we spent time and feel is important in our community, to give our lobbyists the muscle to be able to say, you know, well, Issaquah looked at this, and this is important in how they're doing things, I think would be, would be helpful, both for us and at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you. And so I think we will have time for comments, but I think we're going to try to separate the comments and the questions. So Councilmember Walsh, is it more of a question or a comment?
I will leave.
Okay, thanks. I don't see any more questions, but I did have a few. So this is Council President Hunt, and my first question was, Shelley, in your presentation, you spoke to that we don't have a capital request as one of our main, one of our main elements of our legislative agenda. And there are a few, there are a few projects requiring funding, including the PFOS, the city supporting the PFOS study, that would be Department of Ecology's request for $750,000. And there's also the Harvey Manning Park expansion. And so I wondered why those, or if those are eligible, and if they are eligible, then why those would, were decided to not be a capital request? Especially, I believe that PFOS has been, PFOS-related work has been a capital request in very recent years.
Yes, that's a great president, a great question, Council President Hunt. So within the capital budget, there are a variety of funding sources. So there's money that goes towards state agencies, so in this case, the Department of Ecology. There's money that goes towards grant programs, for example, the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program, which is where the funding for the Harvey Manning Park expansion is. And so the, where we typically, or a local government or a nonprofit typically seeks direct appropriation, is through the local and community project portion of the capital budget. That's the, that's where essentially cities can submit grant applications and ask for direct funding for a city project. So the reason that the Department of Ecology requests for PFOS funding and the Harvey Manning request, those are all capital budget requests. So they could be elevated to be on the city's legislative agenda. They are just not items that the city would be filling out a capital budget request form and making the, making the request through that portion of the capital budget. It would be going through a different avenue. So I'm not sure if I answered that really clearly, but essentially, we would, we would be supporting those capital budget requests because they are already being requested by another entity. And so we would just be supporting that request, rather than the city initiating the request and essentially the city not being able to receive any funding unless we make it a high priority.
Okay, thank you. And I think you mentioned before that it is an option to elevate it and support a request that is made on behalf of a partner, right? So that could be one way to, one option.
Yep, correct.
Okay. Okay. And then we, I had two questions. And then we, I had two questions that relate to public comments that we heard earlier. And the first one is on the fire, forest fire, wildfire prevention. With everything else going on, it's, there's so many other things, but that was, is a huge concern of our community. And I wondered, and I didn't see anything, and I wondered if there is, is there something in here that relates to that?
I don't believe we have a statement in the policy manual related to fire planning or fire protection. So it is, you know, worth considering, including that in the policy manual. I, prior to tonight's comment, wasn't aware of any specific request that was being advanced. So this was educational for me as well.
Okay. Thank you. And then last question is with regards, I think that we probably need more information than we will be able to get tonight on this. But I did wonder if somebody could speak to the request regarding the Isakua Food Bank that was also in a public comment earlier tonight? More details about that and how advanced or how far along in that process this proposal is. So I'll direct that question to City Administrator Bob Kowits, if you have information on that.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. I'm looking to see if Ms. Burbach is still on the line. She has been in touch with the city over the last, the last few months on this proposal. And I think she has the most information. I am also looking, and I do see Eastside Fire and Rescue Chief Jeff Clark on the line. So I know that they have been talking with Eber. Chief Clark, do you feel comfortable providing any additional information?
Certainly. We have been meeting, I'll give a quick overview now. And I would say that certainly by December, we can give a more comprehensive.
I hope it's not just me, but I have, I am not hearing Chief Clark. So we also have Mayor Polly on the line, and she would like to comment on this. So Mayor Polly, please go ahead, thanks.
Thank you, Council President, for the opportunity to comment. This is Mayor Polly. Boy, that Squaw Mountain service is pretty sketchy. So I am sure some of the comments I'm going to share are probably similar to what Chief Clark would share. The food bank is currently located in the city facility. And over the last three to four years, we've had lots of discussions about how they could possibly expand, whether it could be done within the city facility itself, which turned out to be a very, very expensive project. And then how it might be able to happen with other community partners. So the fire chief and the food bank executive director have been keeping the city up to date on the progress of what they're doing. And we are strongly in support of going to Olympia to advocate for this project because of the huge impact it has on the community. I'm sure I'll be dragging down the mayor from Sumamish as well, and anybody else I can that is in the service area for the food bank, which is the Isakua School District Service Area. So they've been a really good partner. I know they've already expanded and allowed them to use, put the food, the clothing bank over there, which was a question that Councilmember Walsh had had. So that is getting ready to go into operation in a COVID-safe manner. And we're so excited that we can put that back online. So they've been very collaborative, and we're quite supportive of the partnership that the three of us have developed. And we would support if the administration is making this the capital request for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. That answers my question. And Chief Clark, if you are on the line and would like to try to make your comment, we were not able to hear you very well last time. Okay. Okay. I think maybe we'll follow up later. This is one of the hiccups of the virtual meetings, unfortunately. Okay, so then I think, oh, we do have a question. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. The follow-up question I have is, I was actually going to comment on the food bank request during the comments, but the fault, since we're addressing it now, the follow-up question I have to the city strongly supporting that, I would, I would guess that the council would strongly support that as, or the council would support that as well. But we did hear some commentary from Shelley Helder about being careful about the requests that we make and making sure that it's ready and that it's made at the right time. So I don't know that I need the answer now unless somebody can address whether the timing is right for making that request. Thank you.
City Administrator Bob Kowits.
Yes, thank you, Council President. As Ms. Helder said, there are, can be two categories for the city in dealing with capital projects, supporting those that are on our initiative and then supporting those that are from other community partners. So I think that if the council wanted to move forward with this, this could be supporting a proposal from our community partner. In talking with Cory last week, I think they're very close to having a proposal. They have been working with members of our local legislative delegation in anticipation of putting something forward next year. So I think if we added to our agenda that we were supporting their request, that that would be an appropriate way to go.
Thank you for that response. And I think my, I would just want to make sure that we're not doing something that's inconsistent with Shelley's advice that we pay her to provide us. That's all. Thank you.
And Council President, I would ask Ms. Helder if she had any other further comments. I know that she has, is aware of the request, was aware of the request before this evening. So if she had anything else she'd like to add.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I had a similar question when I first heard about the Isakua Food Bank request. But in learning a little bit more about it, it does sound like the timing, the size of the request, the partnership of the request, the fact that it would be serving a vulnerable population, it seems like it is a well-suited request for the 2021 session.
Great, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. So at this point in the meeting, we will see if there is anyone on the line, any members of the public that would like to comment. Clerk Eggers, is there anyone on the line that would like to comment on this item? Or that has signed up to comment?
Thank you. I have not received any signups. However, if there is someone who has called in and would like to speak now, please press star three, and that will signal to me that you would like some time. And I'll wait just a moment. And let me verify. And no one has done so.
Okay, thank you. And I also did want to give one more opportunity to Chief Clark, if he's able to comment on this as well. So Chief Clark, if he is tested.
He is the 480 number. I will put in a request to unmute. You may need to press star six on your line. Again, you may need to press star six.
Can you hear me?
I sure can, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, sorry for that, council. Good old Wi-Fi connections. So I heard some of the conversation after I got cut off. All that I would say is that I do feel that this is a viable option. And working with our legislative delegation in past years about this, I think that Cory has a good plan that we support and will be moving in that direction. And certainly by the time the funding decisions are made at the state, there will be something that will be viable, whether or not the legislature will move forward with it, but there will be a presentation that we'll be able to provide, and we hope for support on it.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that additional information. And now we will move into council discussion and council direction. I believe the first comment is Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. I was kind of going to follow up on what Councilmember Martz brought up about the equity and police accountability. I think we have absolutely been ahead of the game there, and we should be very proud of the work that we have done. And I absolutely think we should advocate at the state level. But I think we were very smart, rightly so, in writing our kind of action items to things that the city can do. And so I'm not sure I see much in our police accountability list that I think would be appropriate at the state level. So I think if that's a direction that we want to go, we may need to sit down and have some thoughts about what we, what changes we would want to see on the state level in order to achieve our goals. So I'm in support, but I don't, I wouldn't just say, hey, look, we did this thing, because I don't think that necessarily supports the changes that we would want to see at the state. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are other comments, okay, Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Council President. This is Councilmember Martz. I think that there definitely are line items in our action plan that have correlations to things that are being considered. I look at specifically around review of police department policies for discipline and termination. I believe that those are heavily influenced by state regs, and I believe that there are going to be ongoing efforts in those areas at the state level as part of the conversations about how to do police reform. Let's see here. I don't know if I have others. That was the one I was sort of thinking of that was, that was the most obvious. Again, I think having something that, you know, we don't know exactly what bills are going to rise up, but I think having some general, having something that just points back to, look, if there is an opportunity, if there is, to use an overused word, synergy, having our legislative goals reference this document, I think would be helpful. And it would, if an opportunity comes up, I think it gives ammo for our lobbyists to help, to help in these areas. So I understand your concern. Many of these are written very specifically, I mean, the point of this was to do things that we could make a change on, rather than like, Isakua believes in, you know, justice. Oh, great. But I do think there are things here specifically. I am confident that if we reference this, there will come a point in this legislative session where our lobbyists will be able to say, well, you know, that dovetails with what Isakua is doing. So I would very much like to see a sentence like that in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council members that would like to comment and help give direction on the legislative agenda? You could indicate in the comments. Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you, this is Councilmember DeMichele. Well, I'll just put my oar in the water and say that I would strongly support, including the Isakua Food and Clothing Bank suggestion or comment that was given us tonight, to include that as a capital request. So I would like to see that included. And then I will agree with Councilmember Walsh and Martz that we should reference our police accountability and equity statement in the document. And I really also would like to say, overall, I thought it was a great document, and I agree with the top priorities. I think those are significant issues that we need to address for our community. So I thank you for the work you did, and overall, I think it's a great statement. So thank you.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. I don't have anything different really than what I said before. I just want to reiterate a couple of things. One, I would like to see the change that I mentioned in the last bullet of affordable housing regarding possible proposed changes. And I also strongly support, including the food bank, just with a caveat of the things that I mentioned earlier. But other than that, strongly, strongly, strongly support it and very excited about the partnership there. And the police accountability reference is fine with me. And this document has evolved over the last several years dramatically. And this year's version is dramatically improved, not only from last year, but it doesn't even resemble what we started with. And so I can't thank enough all of the people who helped put this together. And if that's, if the majority of that is Jean and Shelley, then thank you. But anybody else who worked on it, this really is excellent work, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh has a comment.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. I'll also just throw my thanks in there for creating this document and taking it so much further in the last few years. I think it serves our city well, and it makes us look darn good down in the state house. And then I also just want to throw my support behind comments about supporting the food bank in their capital request. As much as, yes, they are a separate group outside of the city, gosh, this year, we really needed, and I think everyone is leaning heavily on them. I think there's a shot that they have to get some capital money, this is it. So I would definitely be in support of adding our weight behind that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do not see any other council members wanting to comment, so I will, oh, Councilmember Martz has a comment.
Thank you, Council President. This is Councilmember Martz. I just, for the record, also want to support the food, the idea of having the food bank capital request go in as a capital request on our part, and that I support Councilmember Goodman's housing language revision. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So now, not currently seeing any other council members wishing to comment, I will make my comments. So this is Council President Hunt. And firstly, I will mention that we did not receive any email comments specifically on this item. I have been summarizing email comments that we received, and we did not receive any. My comments are firstly, I would support the food bank capital request. I think that that would also, however, I would also like to receive more information about that and where it is in the planning process, just so that we have a better grounding of that plan and have some more information, so we can feel more knowledgeable about it. But I do support it. I also have one change that I feel strongly about, which is that in our, in the legislative agenda, under the environment, natural resources section, says Isakua will monitor legislation that will facilitate the transition away from fossil fuels through electrification of buildings and transportation systems. And this is very likely to come up in legislative session, I believe. And it also is very much in line with our membership in the K-4C and our climate convening and all of the advocacy around climate, that we would support legislation that will facilitate the transition away from fossil fuels through electrification of buildings and transportation systems. And in fact, there's language very similar in the K-4C advocacy. So I would like to change that to support rather than monitor. And then I support the changes, I think I support the changes that were recommended by- by Councilmember Goodman. I also think that we had a lot of discussion about the need for the state to have protections for, after the eviction moratorium is lifted, to facilitate what could be an eviction cliff for many communities across the state. And so I think that wording to the effect that this is something that our council is very concerned about and would like to advocate for the state to take up would be appropriate, given the amount of discussion. I think it is more than mediation, but mediation was definitely a large part of our conversation. There was also, in our previous conversations on mediation, there was a discussion around comparing to the mediation that's required before foreclosure. And I think that requiring mediation beyond this particular moratorium would also be of interest to me. So I think wording to that effect that council might consider when this comes back would be useful. And then two more things. One is, we have had a lot of discussion this year also around the need for there to be investments in the state's behavioral health system, and this is in line with the SCA legislative agenda. I think they haven't adopted the final version yet, but it does seem to be aligned with what is being considered. So I would like to make sure that that is there, the growing need. And lastly, I think, yes, lastly, the forest fire item, this comes up often, and then it's a major concern for the community, and I think there is a need for more funding to manage forests to prevent that, especially with climate change. It will just likely, all the science suggests that it will continue to get worse. So I would like to have that in our legislative agenda, so that if there are efforts to take preventative action, that that would be something the city would support. That concludes my comments, and there is now a comment from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. So you brought up something that I had forgotten to bring up. First of all, Council President Hunt, thank you for reminding me in my comments of one thing, and that is, not only did I request or make a comment about making a change to the last bullet item in affordable housing, but I'd also suggested that we have some sort of wording that encourages the legislature to take up the topic. And so I think that, given the conversations that we've had over several months, that maybe something, in addition to that last bullet, along the lines of what I and Council President Hunt have talked about tonight, about taking up the issue of curbing the tide of evictions in some way would be helpful, not just monitor, but encourage the legislator to take up that, legislature to take up that topic. And then the second one, that was a new one for me that Council President Hunt just brought up, and I just heard this today from a constituent, and that was about forest management and for the purpose of mitigating the possibility of the urban wildfires. So I would be in support of some sort of language that, I'm not sure what that looks like, because we really haven't had much of a conversation about what that language might look like. And so I kind of would, I don't know, but I would support something in there, because it is a huge issue for our community, and it's coming up more and more, more and more often for many reasons. So I think that's my last comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Clark, if you would like to comment, please go ahead.
All right.
We can hear you.
I apologize.
No. Hi, Clerk Eggers here. I'm going to, Chief Clark, do we have you back?
Yeah, am I back?
Yes.
Yes, that was a technical error on my part, sorry. I just wanted to mention that this upcoming Thursday night at the E-For Board meeting, we're here discussing our legislative agenda. We will have a wildland discussion and a short presentation on some new maps that have come out. And I would really appreciate the comment of the citizen who called in to say that whatever we put together would be a very similar, if not identical, statement with the city and all of our cities from Eastside, along with what that is. But we will be working that issue this next Thursday night, and I will be sure to get that out to all of our legislative bodies, so that you're aware of the issue before you make the decision on your final agenda here next month.
Thank you, Chief Clark. That's very helpful. Are there any additional comments that anyone would like to make? Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you. This is Councilmember DeMichele. Thanks to Council President Hunt for bringing up the issue of behavioral health and the Sound Cities Association position on that. A week ago, we arrived at our last meeting, we had an issue brought up to us about that, and that I think is really important for us to remember, and that is that there is a terrific shortage of counselors. And the legislature, last time around, did try to address this with more funding for education, more funding to support scholarships and so forth for people who are entering the counseling field. And so if we're going to support increases in behavioral health, I think we need to be really cognizant of the fact that we have a shortage, we have a structural shortage of counselors due to the low wages that they get and the high cost of education. And if we wanted to really support that, we need to include some language there in terms of the legislature addressing the need for support for additional behavioral health education and job, let's see, not job skills training, but making a path easier for people to become counselors. And so, because otherwise, continuing to call for additional behavioral health without that change in the job market is really, it's not going to do much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. I do not see any other comments. And this is Council President Hunt. I wanted to make one further comment, which is that I also support Councilmember Martz and others who spoke to aligning with our police accountability and equity plan. I think that that is another important topic that we have spoken about in the past, and definitely would like to see the, see changes at the state level as well. So that concludes my comments, and I am not seeing any other comments. I'll give one more second for anybody in the chat, and then I'll also ask Jean, did that answer, and Jean and my C.C. city administrator, Bob Quitz, is on the line as well, does this answer your questions and give you what you need to proceed?
Council President, members of the council, thank you for the input. If you'd like, Council President, I've got what I believe is the complete list. Would that be useful, just to quickly go through it before we conclude the item?
Yes, I'm seeing nods. Please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. First was dealing with our language regarding affordable housing. To be more active than just monitoring, we'll go back and make sure that we have the proper language included in that. The second was to support the request from the food bank as they move forward with their capital project, to, next, to incorporate the work of our police, human services, and equity action plan, that would be included as well. And again, we'll work on the specific language to bring back to you. Next was the Council President's issue regarding green initiatives that we would support rather than monitor, and again, we'll work on the specific language there. Next, to have language regarding encouraging legislation for the protection of tenants after the eviction moratorium concludes. And then finally, language supporting legislation regarding behavioral health. So we'll work, we'll wordsmith those items between now and, I believe, Jean, we're coming back on December 7th, is that correct? With this document for adoption. So we'll have those specific changes called out for the document on the 7th. So hopefully, I have captured, at least in broad strokes, the issues that have been raised. We'll work on the precise wording over the next couple of weeks and have it back on December 7th.
Thank you, City Administrator Bob Quitz. I might have missed it, but I didn't hear the forest, the wildland management in the list.
And that is on my list, and I apologize. I think I did, because I have my scribbles, yes. So we'll work with Eastside Fire, we'll work with Eastside Fire and Rescue on their specific language.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. And Shelley, would you like to make a closing comment?
No, I was just going to say that I also had the forest/wildland management on my list, wanted to make sure that you all knew that we heard you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, I am not seeing any more comments now. So I think we are ready now to move to our next item, and thank you all very much for that presentation on the legislative agenda. So our next item is ID 0718, Proposed 2021 Budget Final Deliberations, and this will be presented by Beth Goldberg, Finance Director.
Good evening, Council President Hunt and council members. I do think that Mayor Pauli wanted to offer some opening remarks, so I will turn it over to her first.
Thank you, Director Goldberg. Thank you, Council President. Good evening, city council members and members of the public. Before Director Goldberg walks through this evening's presentation, I want to provide a brief overview of how we arrived at this moment and the approach that I used to make the recommendations that Director Goldberg will share with you this evening. As you now continue your deliberations on the proposed 2021 budget that I presented in September, we will share a revenue update with you this evening that positively impacts 2020 as well as 2021. The timing of this revenue update is the same as in previous years, usually somewhat near the end of your budget deliberations, but the magnitude of this revenue update is very unusual. Similar to my budget introduction in September, I believe some additional context on this latest revenue projection and a list of proposed expenditure additions for 2021, as well as additional expenditures in 2020, may be helpful with your ongoing deliberations. When Director Goldberg presented the revenue forecast in August, we committed to preparing a revised revenue forecast in early November. It is a common practice in many jurisdictions to ensure that the budget that you adopt has the most up-to-date financial information as possible. In most years, this practice results in very modest changes, if any, to the forecast. However, in times of economic uncertainty, such as now, there could be significant changes. And when this happens, the jurisdictions have a choice to, you could opt to incorporate the changes in the adopted budget, you could stay the course and address the changes through budget amendments after the budget is adopted. When the pandemic first hit, we faced so many unprecedented challenges, including forecasting changes to our revenue. To ensure flexibility, as we reported during this unprecedented crisis, the city took a phased approach to cut expenditures this year. While extremely difficult, Issaquah's early proactive decisions mean we have more options than facing dramatic budget cuts that many jurisdictions across Washington State and the nation are now currently facing. Now, our latest financial forecast brings some good news. Our sales tax revenues are improving. They are still below pre-pandemic levels, however. The forecast that Director Goldberg will share results in additional general fund revenues that would allow the city to identify roughly $3 million worth of one-time expenditures and as much as $1 million in ongoing expenditures. In identifying potential options for deploying these revenues, I considered the following principles. First, I'm recommending we align ongoing expenditures with ongoing revenues. The proposal presented here tonight refrains from attaching new ongoing expenditures to one-time revenues. I am committed to making investments in our community now and presenting a projected ending fund balance that is in alignment with our adopted financial policies. Second, I looked at the COVID reductions we made earlier this year to determine where there were any expenditures that I felt needed to be restored. And third, I used our strategic plan to identify where to direct funds, with a special emphasis on infrastructure, maintenance, asset management, and supporting our hard-working employees who made sacrifices this year to help address our financial challenges. Fourth, I listened to the deliberations that you've already had to pull out themes of where council may have an interest in restoring certain programs, such as the payment management program, which was put on hold. And finally, I looked for opportunities to address, as much as feasible, some of the underlying issues that are leading to our structural deficits. While far from solved, my recommendation is make a modest down payment to better align expenditures with revenues. On this note, as Director Goldberg will explain, our year structural shortfalls still remain. In considering the new ongoing expenditures, I would like to urge the city council to acknowledge that the city may need to consider new revenues in future years in order to sustain existing services and continue to make new investments in the city's strategic priorities. The fact of the matter remains, the city's current mix of revenues, even during times of economic strength, are not sufficient to meet all of the city's needs. I want to thank the city council for proactively engaging in the current budget process and the previous COVID reduction processes. This has been a year like no other, and the city council's involvement has been critical to our ability to respond to these unprecedented times. I'd like to now pass the baton back to Director Goldberg to take you through the presentation, and I appreciate the opportunity of being able to address the council work session tonight. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pauli, and I will hand it back over to Director Goldberg.
Okay, let me share my screen.
I actually am seeing gray boxes.
Oh, no. We were having trouble earlier today also. Let me try unsharing, and then if that doesn't work...
And I will say too, if my fellow council members are not having that issue, please let us, let me know.
Is that better?
Yes.
Let me, hang on, let me. Okay, perfect. A few technical difficulties, but hopefully that's the last of them for this evening. So as Mayor Pauli indicated, I want to provide an update tonight as the council continues its 2021 budget deliberations. And, sorry, now I'm not getting, I need to get to my forward button. Hang on, now I'm having technical difficulties. Sorry about this. Okay. So we are providing an update of the financial forecast this evening, and as Mayor Pauli indicated, and as a reminder to all of you, we, when we presented the August forecast, we made a commitment to come back to you in November to provide you an updated revenue forecast. And we did this because, first and foremost, it's a good practice, and second, because in times of economic challenges, it, things can change very quickly, so it is important that we remain vigilant and stay on top of any changing dynamics. As Mayor Pauli indicated, most of the time, doing this does not result in any changes, but in times of economic upheaval, it can, it can result in changes. And actually, I also want to take a little bit of a side turn here and let all of you know that in your packet, there is a template, I think it's the last page of the packet, that has... I think it's the last page of the packet that has our monthly financial results. So I want to call your attention to that. I know there's been some confusion about whether these have been provided in the past or not. We have provided these on three other occasions this year. We provided one in April, one in May, and then one in August. So the one we're providing tonight is the fourth one that we've provided this year. So just want to call your attention to that. And then moving back to regularly scheduled business. So the forecast does, as Mayor Polly indicates, put some additional revenues on the table. So the other thing we want to talk to you about is options for deploying those new resources. And then would like to have discussion here, council feedback, final direction on what the administration will include in the final package for budget adoption. As a reminder, our schedule is here. We're getting ever closer to November 16th. We are here on November 5th. I do want to point out, as is asterisk on this slide, that if more time is needed for deliberations beyond this evening, we do have an opportunity to reconvene next Tuesday, November 10th, in preparation for adoption on November 16th. So now for the forecast. And it may be because I've been doing this a little bit too long, but this time I decided to add a little cartoon here. This feels like pretty symbolic for this year, which has been a roller coaster. And we're not necessarily at the top of the roller coaster. I would say we're going up is where the revenues are now. But this year has been a definite roller coaster. And changing forecasts are normal in times of economic upheaval. And they can be very hard to predict. No recession is the same. So during the Great Recession, I was in a situation where the revenues kept deteriorating, and I was often delivering bad news. This one has been a little bit different in that the drop at the beginning was very steep. And the bounce back since then, and we're certainly not back to where we were by any stretch of the imagination, but as you'll see, has been very, very topsy-turvy. So this one's been very hard to predict. And, you know, really, it's kind of in keeping with, first of all, the year. 2020 has just been nuts. But also, we've not had a recession in modern times caused by a major pandemic. And so there just isn't a rulebook of how revenues will perform, how the economy will perform in this situation. So very much on a roller coaster. And I guess the only thing I would say is fasten your seatbelts. And if you're a thrill seeker, maybe raise your hands and scream as we're going through this. So anyway, that's a little bit of a, a little maybe levity. So in terms of where we are, we, this is a summary similar to what you've seen in past presentations. The light green columns represent what we had presented in September when we transmitted the proposed budget. And the dark green columns represent the change. So for 2020, we are seeing a change, a net change, impact on fund balance of about $2.8 million. 3.3 million of this is in revenues. And that's slightly offset by slightly higher expenditures than we were originally anticipating, some of which will be presented in a budget amendment to the City Council in December. Some of it's related to grants and things of that nature. So the net impact on 2020 is about $2.8 million. In terms of the impact on 2021, we're forecasting another change in revenues of 1.7 million. And that's a lower revenue amount than the 2021 amount because a significant portion of the 2020 amount is one-time changes to revenues. And then we are expecting some modest improvements to our expenditures. We got news a couple of weeks ago from Eastside Fire and Rescue that our contract costs next year are coming in lower than what we anticipated due to some one-time savings from their capital program. So we've got that reflected. And then we've got some small errata items that make up this $300,000. And this might be also a good time to point out that in the final budget, we've also got a few other technical changes to the non-general fund budgets, primarily related to where, where amounts are captured. So that will be in the final package. But in terms of the general fund, the net impact for 2021 is 1.9 million. But the impact on fund balance is cumulative. So at $4.6 million, that's taking into account the 2020 benefit to fund balance and then the benefit to fund balance resulting from the 2021 changes. And also just in terms of context, I've been reading this week that the city of Seattle presented to its city council this week their revised revenue forecast. And in terms of scope, it's very different. It's, they're expecting, I think it's $36 million more in their general fund in 2020 and another 32 million in 2021. I'm sharing this with you mainly because when you look at it on a percentage basis, it's actually very much in line with the percentage change impact that we're forecasting here. So I thought that might be useful context for you all to have as you're thinking about this information. Okay, so what specifically has changed? So the box on this slide, the items in red are things that recommending taking down. And the things in black are things that represent increases. So I'm going to talk more about sales tax in a moment. But just want to point out that nearly half of the 2021 amount is one-time increase in sales tax due to a major technology software purchased by a significant business in the city of Issaquah. So very much unexpected one-time infusion that is coming to our benefit in the form of sales tax. And also just to piggyback on my previous comments about Seattle, much of their forecast change is also related to sales tax. So you'll see in ours, most of the change is related to sales tax. So there's some commonality in there. Utility tax and BNO tax, taking that down very slightly based on the latest information that we have. I will note with the BNO tax that we're kind of in a funny timing situation, similar to where we were actually with the August forecast. In that third quarter, BNO tax was, had to be postmarked by October 31st, which was Saturday. So we've gotten, got some data for October, but it's not representative because we're expecting large amounts to come in, like literally, this week. So there may be some changes to BNO, but without actually having that data at our disposal, it's hard to, it's hard to anticipate how that might change the forecast. Property tax is another one that's a little bit tricky. Property tax was due October 31st. So we're just getting that data. As a reminder to, to all of you, we, in, back in April, we weren't sure about what impact this recession might have on homeowners' ability to pay their mortgage and their property tax. So back at our first forecast back in April, we did recommend taking down property tax by 10%. Property tax has been coming in on forecast, but again, it doesn't capture what might be happening with that October 31st payment. So if, if the property tax ends up coming in as it has earlier in the year, there might be some upside risk here. But it's again, hard to anticipate without having that, that data point at our disposal. Permit fees were taking up. And this is a one-time increase related to a number of large projects that are underway in the city of Issaquah right now. The impact of the permit fee increase was not captured for those large projects. So we are seeing a fairly significant infusion of additional revenues from those, from those projects with this forecast. Parks were taking down slightly to reflect more limited activity as a result of COVID. We are not, at this point, recommending any changes for 2021 just because there are still so many unknowns out there. The revenue projections that we have in the budget for parks for 2021 assume a more limited set of operations. And without knowing what's going to be going on at the time, it's just, it's too early to make an adjustment, plus or minus there. So that's a revenue we're going to have to keep watching. Similarly, public safety is, has been kind of a funny one. It, this change reflects some grants that weren't previously anticipated, that have some matching expenditures. And then it also reflects increased revenue for our, from our jail contracts. So earlier this year, we saw a dip in jail utilization as a result of COVID precautions. But what we've seen in the intervening months is that our contract cities are starting to use the jail much more than what we anticipated. So we are bringing this forecast up. We are not bringing it up, though, at this time for 2021. Similar for part of the reasons with parks is we just need more time to see what's going on with COVID. And just as a little bit of a vignette on this, I was talking to Kristi Shorn in municipal court and was talking about, well, do we need to take up court revenues? And she informed me that right around that time, one of our contract cities had some COVID cases in their police department and had stopped filing cases. So that's kind of an, I think I'm offering it as a snapshot to again reinforce how quickly things are changing. And, you know, the minute you see things trending up, something might happen with the course of the pandemic and lead to a change. So again, reinforcing why we need to just be watching this stuff very carefully. In terms of other revenue changes, this reflects some additional CARES Act money. The earlier forecasts factored in the round one CARES Act money. But council may recall that we, there was a round two. So this is factored in here. In addition, liquor excise taxes are performing very well. So we've got that incorporated in the forecast. Conversely, poll tabs are not performing so well. So I think people are indulging, but not in local watering holes, but probably in their homes, reflecting why liquor taxes are up, but poll tabs are down. And then last, as I mentioned on the last slide, we're making some adjustments up in expenditures. It's reflected as a negative here because it has a negative impact on the bottom line and then down in 2021. So now I want to spend a little bit of time talking about sales tax, which I am calling the enigma because this one has been very wily this year. So you might recall when I presented, well, with the August forecast and then with the proposed budget, we actually brought sales tax up. We took the unusual step of actually increasing that forecast in, with the proposed budget. And that was because the trends were, we were, we were coming out of the deep, the steep declines that we saw in the early months of the pandemic. And then August hit. And August, August was a shocker. It was our best sales tax month ever. So any December, which tends to be our best months, we've got data going back to 2006. August 2020 is, was our best performing sales tax month ever. We collected $2.3 million worth of sales tax in August. And to just to give you a little bit of context, our best performing months prior to that was roughly in the $1.6 million range. So an improvement over our best by about $700,000 in the middle of a pandemic. So, so the first question you ask is how could that have happened? So in large part, it is because of this one-time infusion of money that I mentioned earlier, thanks to one of our major establishments. And that represents roughly about $900,000 of this increase. But if you set that aside, August was still very strong. We were up from 6% from August of 2019. It's our best monthly performance since February, so since the start of the pandemic. And it also happens to be our best August ever. So we haven't had another August that has performed this well. So, so pretty, pretty astounding in the middle of a pandemic. And there was an article in the Washington Post last week about the increase in GDP in the third quarter. And they had a line in there that seems very appropriate here, which is, right now, people's spending habits are weird. And I will go and show you a sector-by-sector look to underscore why things are weird. But basically, people aren't spending money on services like travel and things of that nature. But being stuck at home and for people that, you know, continue to have jobs, they don't have a lot to do. So there's a lot of home improvements going on and investments that way. So sales tax performance is kind of, it's wonky, given, given these dynamics. Okay, so for the sector trends, and I showed a slide similar to this with the August forecast, breaking this down by sector. And these show the percentage changes by month compared to 2019. And this is the roller coaster. This is the roller coaster of the cartoon at the beginning of the presentation. They're, they're up and down. And the interesting thing about this and reinforcing how weird things are is that many of these sectors have turned around since I last presented information to you about this in August. So in, after, after August, construction year-to-date is up 3.8% compared to 2019. But with the August forecast, construction was actually down 10 point, over 10%. So that's been a complete turnaround. Retail here is, and retail in this slide is excluding that one-time infusion. I'm trying to just focus on ongoing trends. Retail is down 1.3%, but in August, it was up 0.23%. Food and accommodations, that's been the one that's really been the one, only one that's kind of had a steady trend. In August, this was down 35%. Here, it's down 36%. So that's reflecting that, you know, travel and restaurants are really struggling right now. And we're seeing that in our sales tax performance. And then last, all other, which is an amalgamation of about 15 other categories, is up 3.2%, but in August, it was down 3.6%. So I'm sharing this mainly to reinforce just how unpredictable the sales tax performance has been this year. In terms of raw numbers, August's construction performance was the best performing month since 2017. Our retail trade was the best of any August ever. Even though we're down year-to-date, our August was very strong. And overall, as I said, this is our best August ever. So in terms of what this means for trends, we are continuing to see improvement here. So overall, we are, and we are down, well, we're up 5.5% when you factor in that one-time infusion. When you back that out, we're down 2.7% relative to last year. When you back that out, we're down 2.7% relative to last year. But if you break it down, pre-COVID, post-COVID, you may all recall previously, we've talked about how strong our January and February were. It's bolstered by the strong January and February performance. If you look at the months since COVID, we're trending down about 6.6% compared to last In terms of the forecast itself, we are recommending that we bring sales tax up from 14.7 million in September to 16.6% this November for an increase of 1.8 million. As I mentioned previously, about half of this is that one-time amount, half is ongoing. And then that translates, that ongoing amount translates into 2021, bringing up the sales tax forecast from 14.8 million to 15.8 million. This is still below where we were at the 2020 adopted levels. So while we're seeing improvement, we're still running below by about, yeah, we're running below. We were at about 16 million. Oops, sorry, did, oh no. Okay, is that back?
It looks like it's in, for me, it's in the presenter's view.
Okay, there, okay, sorry. A little technical difficulty. Sorry about that. Okay, so in terms of risks to the forecast, we do, as I mentioned at the outset, we have some upside risk from property tax. Certainly, if the economy, sales tax continues to perform well, we may see some upside there, some upside with BNO. But then conversely, on the downside risk, we don't know what's going to happen with the economy in the future months. There remains questions about whether there will be future federal relief. I was just seeing some coverage tonight prognosticating that after the election, there might be something. But, you know, we heard that in August, that there might be something. So if there is federal relief, that would be helpful to our situation. We talked earlier in this, I think came up during the legislative discussion earlier this evening, state funding to offset our costs for purchasing the Bergsma property may be coming our way in 2021, the tail end of 2021. That would help our fund balance. In terms of downside risks, you know, the economy and COVID, our case numbers are going up, and, you know, no one knows if there will be further restrictions or not. But if there are, then we could see some contractions in our sales tax there. State shared revenues, again dovetailing with the legislative presentation, if the state is looking at state shared revenues to help balance its budget, we may see some contraction there. And then, of course, we've got the structural deficit in the out years. So I will maybe pause there to see if there are any questions on that part before I start talking about the expenditure side of the equation.
Okay, sounds good. Council, if you have any questions on the revenue projections, please indicate that in the chat. I'm not actually seeing any questions at this time, so I think you can proceed.
Okay. So as the mayor mentioned in her opening remarks, when looking at the recommendations for how to deploy these additional revenues, she did take into account the strategic plans as a guide and a basis for making the recommendations. So I just wanted to highlight that that is an underlying principle in this. And I'm going to go through and, I'm having trouble, there we go, advancing tonight. So in terms of how the council might decide to deploy these resources, we've got a couple of topics that we want to cover tonight. A Title 18 update, which I'm going to turn over to Deputy City Administrator Snyder in a moment. We've got an update on compensated absence liabilities for you. This was something that was discussed at the last session. We've got an update there. And then policy considerations on how much and how to deploy ongoing expenditures. Similarly, for one-time expenditures. Of course, the impact on fund balance is always part of the discussion. And then if council has other changes to the budget, we would welcome that input. So I will turn this now over to Deputy City Administrator Snyder.
Thank you, Director Goldberg. This is Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder. Good evening. So for the Title 18 update, as one of our members of the public who commented earlier on the budget, we do have proposed $500,000 in the budget. The deliverables chart that's in your packet this evening details out how these funds would be spent. But essentially, close to 300,000 of that would be in planning consultants that would help take the role of what typically would be staff and give us a little bit more horsepower to be able to help draft code and manage some of the public outreach process as well as manage and interface with our technical consultants. Which brings me to the next bullet, our technical experts that we need to help inform, updates to critical areas. For example, I think that's really the largest area where we need some additional technical expertise. And then, these are estimates that are based off of our conversations and communication with consultants who do this work. But we do need to issue RFQs, and when we do so, it's possible that some of the costs may change. But this is really our best guess, the best estimate that we have moving forward. And this is a change from what I think we had anticipated a couple of years ago. There's reason for this change. One is that I think we've realized, as we have started this process and worked with the council ad hoc committee on Title 18, we've realized that we were too optimistic at the outset for what our staff could accomplish in-house. And we've also realized that we need to rework our consultants that we've hired and rework the team to be able to properly resource the large update that this really is. And so this is why we are seeking additional budget for the $500,000 in 2021. The timeline is also located in your packet on the deliverables chart at the end of that document. And it basically outlines that 2021, we would be spending doing most of the public outreach, drafting code, and then looking at the council review process, commission review process, revising any code based out of that process, and then adoption would occur in 2022. And we do anticipate additional budget would be needed in 2022. So far, we've estimated that to be about $50,000 for any additional public outreach that may be needed following the changes and throughout the revision process, and also to finalize the draft code. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I do not see, not seeing any council members that have questions at this time.
Thank you. I think that means we're back to you, Director Goldberg.
Director Goldberg, you are on mute.
Yes, sorry. Thank you. So now I want to spend a little bit of time talking about the compensated absence liability designation that we had in fund balance. There was some questions about whether we could do a payout of the comp time portion of the compensated absences to get that off of the books. And what we've got here is a proposal that would reduce the amount that we are carrying for comp time by doing payouts over the next two years, 2021 and 2022. There was a meeting at the, or a question at the last discussion on this about whether the other funds had sufficient fund balance to cover these costs. And so we've got this chart here to demonstrate that the other funds do have the ability to cover these costs. And so basically, what we're proposing here is that we reduce the $1 million general fund liability and then the related liabilities in the other funds over two years and increase the expenditures by a corresponding amount. And I'm seeing some stuff in the chat. Is there?
I think you can proceed.
Okay. Okay, so now the question is, how to deploy the additional revenues that we talked about in the forecast? As a reminder, the forecast improves the general fund outlook by $4.6 million, about 1 million of which is ongoing and 3.6 million is one-time. But to maintain the 15% to 20% fund balance target over the forecast period, we're recommending reducing the amount of one-time to 3 million, and then if council wishes to consider the ongoing at that, at about a million. So in terms of the fund balance impact, before going through the actual recommendations, if you look at the light green bar in the middle here, what's reflected here is 1 million of new ongoing expenses and 3 million of new one-time expenses. And when you do that, the undesignated fund balance would, for 2021 and 2022, would be 19%. And then it drops thereafter. Just to ground all of you, the previous version of this, before the revised forecast in this plan, this is about a one percentage point change from the previous estimate. So, for example, 2021 was at a 20% undesignated fund balance. And what you'll also see here is that we've got the comp time cashouts at $500,000 each year reflected in this table here. So again, just to reinforce, the mayor, when she was considering how to deploy these resources, the recommendations for deploying these resources was guided by two principles, restoring select COVID reductions and then targeting strategic plan priorities. In terms of ongoing options, so we've got if here, because, as the mayor indicated, we still have some structural challenges in the out year. So committing ongoing revenues now, you know, potentially exacerbates that. So if we were to allocate these monies, they're, you know, a nod to the fact that sometime in the future years, likely need to be looking at some revenue solutions. In terms of how the mayor recommends the ongoing spend be allocated, the first would be to add a parks maintenance manager position. This is a position that the city had prior to the Great Recession. It was cut during the Great Recession, and we haven't had the position since. The parks maintenance manager duties have been assumed by our facilities manager and has led to his time being spread thin. So by adding this position, we'll be able to improve our parks maintenance capabilities, but also free up more time to focus on city facilities. Recommending 330,000 for concrete maintenance plan, $200,000 to reinstate the contribution to the turf field replacement fund. This was a contribution that the city was making every year prior to 2019, and that had been suspended. So we're recommending reinstating that. Also recommending adding $60,000 to repaint crosswalks. And then, in keeping with the mayor's desire to start addressing some of our structural challenges, we've been carrying a sizable amount of our street operating costs on REIT, which is, as you've heard me talk about before, a very volatile revenue source. So we're recommending deploying some of these ongoing general fund revenues to ease that pressure on the REIT fund. And then over the long term, that frees up REIT dollars ultimately for capital investments. So I will maybe pause there before going on to the next slide to see if there are any questions about this one.
Thank you, Director Goldberg. We do have a question from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Beth, can you tell me the concrete maintenance plan, is that separate from the roadway maintenance? Is that meant to be sidewalks and concrete versus pavement?
So I have a whole cadre of friends here tonight. So I'm going to call on one of my friends to answer that question.
Hi, this is Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder. We do have a whole cadre of friends here. Thank you, Director Goldberg. And the question regarding concrete maintenance and how that's different from the pavement management is, concrete maintenance is mostly referring to sidewalks. And so we have a number of sidewalks that need maintenance. Many times, they're buckling or coming up and creating trip hazards, often due to tree roots. And so this would help ensure that we are adequately addressing the maintenance needs for our sidewalks. And the capital improvement plan, you'll see in future years, I believe, starting in 2022, money allocated for the concrete maintenance plan. And so this would be starting that maintenance actually a little earlier than we had planned, but it is a significant need in Issaquah and an area of discrepancy in terms of our maintenance of public facilities.
Thank you. So do I understand that correctly, that we, that is not a program that we have funded previously, but we had plans to do so in the future, and this is moving that a year earlier?
I don't believe we've funded it in a significant way in recent past. I think that there's some maintenance that we do on an annual basis, but really not enough to keep up with the demand. And if you'd like more information on, more details on that, then perhaps Bennett Ashbaugh can come in and be our second phone of friends here this evening.
Yes, good evening. So Councilmember Walsh, the concrete maintenance plan or program is independent of the pavement management program, however, they are pretty directly related. This program would address ADA compliance issues that deal with pedestrian access ramps that have to be replaced with the pavement management program when we do certain treatments on the roadway. And it would also address the high edges and trippers that are caused by the tree roots that are around the city. And thirdly, it would address the, basically, stormwater conveyance. So the gutters, the curb and gutters that carry the water to the stormwater facilities would also be repaired. As they fail, the water gets underneath the roadway and... would also be repaired as they fail, the water gets underneath the roadway and slowly degradates the roadway, so from beneath. So the idea is that this plan would be separate but aligned with a lot of the PMP, a lot of the PMP goals as we go forward.
Thank you. I do have a separate question, if that's okay, Council President.
Yes, please.
Okay, fantastic. So the next question is on the turf replacement fund. You know, I hadn't really thought about the fact that we had been funding that previously. And I know one of our projects for the upcoming year is supposed to be the turf replacement for Central Park Pad 3, I think it is. So I'm wondering if we are using that turf replacement fund for that? And if we know anything about what percentage of the project is being paid for by that versus one-time fees?
I think for that one, I'm going to call another friend. Is Director Watling available?
He is. Another one of Finance Director Goldberg's friends here, Jeff Watling, Parks and Community Services Director. Great question. Yeah, this turf replacement fund was established in 2018. The idea being a portion of all user fee, a portion of the use fees for the field would go towards this fund while a portion of it would remain in the general fund. So yes, I'd have to confer with finance, but the portion of turf funds that we did collect in that one year will be going towards helping fund a portion of this. But given it was only one year, it's not going to fund a lot of it. I know as we had this discussion with council in 2018, and we anticipated this turf replacement, only three years later, we knew it'd be difficult to fully fund this replacement of Pad 3. But the wisdom, the goal in establishing that fund was by the time we have to replace the synthetic turf at Pad 1 that we opened in 2018, we will come close to fully, being able to fully fund that turf replacement at Pad 1. Once this, once this replacement fund is reinstated, if it's reinstated, I should say.
Thank you very much, all of the friends of Director Goldberg.
Thank you.
Okay. So are there any other, shall I proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay, so in terms of one-time recommendations, the mayor is recommending $900,000 for the pavement management program. And that is in addition to 1.4 million that was already in the proposed budget. So the rationale for this $900,000 is, one, there is, as council has discussed, a need for pavement management. And this amount represents the amount that was cut during the COVID reductions. So we would put the $900,000 in there to catch up on what we were not able to do because of COVID in 2020. The mayor is also recommending $300,000 for Front Street, Street, Front Street, Street, I'm not even going to say it, you guys know what I'm talking about. This was also something that was contemplated for this year. It was actually contemplated for our debt issuance this year, and we backed that out because of the financial strength from COVID and also staff capacity. So with this, these new resources are recommending putting that back. Also, in keeping with feedback that we heard from the city council, concern over the Highlands pole painting, putting some money in for that. This, it would be done in phases, so this would be the first phase. There would be a need to identify additional funding for phases two and three, but this is the start of that. And then two other one-time things in the space of city leadership and services, as the mayor discussed, our employees did make some sacrifices this year through furlough days and some other benefits reductions to help meet our financial challenges. And to acknowledge that, the mayor is recommending putting a small amount in to provide some benefits and compensation to our employees in recognition and acknowledgement of the sacrifices that they made, they made this year as we were dealing with the initial phases of the COVID reductions. So maybe I'll pause there and see if there are any questions on this mix of items.
Yes, we do have some questions. And then I think after these questions, I think maybe we'll take a five-minute break. So Councilmember Ray is, yes, Councilmember Ray is, of course.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. Just to clarify, the ongoing expenditures that you outlined, would those start in 2021? Or are those 2020 expenditures?
Sorry, the functionality of Teams is kind of funky and finding the mute button is sometimes weird. So the ongoing would start in 2021, is what we're contemplating.
Now, the one-time expenditures that you're outlining here, are those 2021 or 2020 expenditures?
2021. The 457 contributions, there would be one month this year, but the rest of this is all 2021. So for example, pavement management, you know, it's just, it's too late in the year to start doing that. So we'll be doing kind of basically extra pavement management next year with this additional, the additional dollars put into this program.
And if I could just jump in, the other one that would be Councilmember, Deputy Council President Ray, is the furlough day incentive. That that is something that we would make our employees whole in 2020.
Okay. And, and so for some of these, we would be incorporating this into our budget for 2021, and others we would do a 2020 budget amendment to?
We would, for the furlough day actually will hit in January of 2021. So that, that actually is, that actually will be a 2021 expense. For the, for the $40,000 for the 457, we believe we've got enough expenditure authority to accommodate that in 2020, so would not need to come back for a budget amendment. But it will have an impact on the bottom line of the budget, so that's why we're showing it here.
Great. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. We have a question from Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Council President. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. Front Street, Street, say that three times fast. A couple of quick questions about the Highlands pole repainting. I noticed it's $205,000 here on the last page of the proposed budget under the CIP projects that weren't included. It was listed as $204,600. So I wondered if someone could comment on the difference there? And then also, I'm interested in what these phases are. Are they locations across the Highlands that need to be painted in different phases? Or is it the bottom part of the pole first and the top? How does that, how's that work?
I'm going to phone a friend for the second part of your question, but for the first part, it's just rounding.
And Councilmember, Hall members of the council, let me try to take a first stab at the first part of the question. When we say phase one of three, there are pole repainting needs throughout the city. And so we wanted to demonstrate that this $200,000, $205,000 is just the first piece of that. There's still another $400,000 and change that we estimate that's needed for pole repainting citywide. And Ms. Snyder, if there's anyone else, you or anyone else from Public Works would like to add on to that?
Thank you. I guess I would turn again to Bennett and see if he wanted to add on to that. I think we're talking about specifically the poles in the Issaquah Highlands, and this would be phase one of three to repaint those poles. And I know that this is something that our residents in the Issaquah Highlands have long been asking for assistance with. It's been an aspect of maintenance that the city has, again, not been able to find the funds for year over year. And so we're hopeful to be able to do that in 2021. And again, take it phase, phase by phase. So Bennett, is there something you'd like to add?
No, that, that pretty well covers it. This, yeah, it was identified, this project was identified back in 2014, and it relates to a group of failing paint coming off of the poles, the mast arms and the signal poles and the pedestrian lights up in the Highlands. We have received some estimates and some, some, I don't know how to say, expert advice on how we should repair these, these poles. And we're going for a phased approach because it is an expensive endeavor. And so we'll identify the groups of poles that we need to do, and that's, we'll just do a phased approach. That's the goal.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the explanation of the phasing.
Hey, great. Thank you. So I think at this point, because we're asking our questions sort of as we go, I would like to call a five-minute break. So thanks, everybody, for sticking with us. And it's five minutes from now, so we'll be back at 8:57, if that's okay. Thanks.
Okay, I think we have everyone back, so welcome back. And I will now hand the presentation back over to Director Goldberg to resume.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So now for new investments, the last ones that I talked about were COVID restorations. For the new investments, we've got two items in the social and economic vitality space, money for landlord-tenant mediation, additional funding for business grants, $500,000. In the infrastructure priority area, we've got $250,000 for an asset management program and another $300,000 for BlackBerry Park Investments. In the growth and development priority area, we've got $50,000 for contract project management for the TOD OC project. And then in city leadership and services, recommending $25,000 of additional funds for return to work costs. This is over and above another $25,000 that we've got in the proposed budget for this. Increase for equity training, $75,000. Again, this is on top of an additional $75,000 that's already in the proposed budget. A request for $25,000 for financial statement preparation. This is needed as we're looking at staff resources with Munis reimplementation, need some additional resources there. And then last, $175,000 for a strategic plan initiative project of projects that we will be identifying during the coming year. So I can pause there and see if there are any questions about these recommendations.
Councilmember Hall has a question.
Thank you, Council President. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. Similar to my line of questioning earlier, I have a question that actually might be best for Director Watling, has to do with the BlackBerry Park Investments. So this has $300,000 in new investments, and this was also a capital improvement, a project that wasn't included in the budget that was funded at, or not funded at 551,000, a little over 551,000. So I'm just wondering what the scope of this project would look like if now? So I'm just wondering what the scope of, um, this project would look like if now's an appropriate time.
You bet, Councilmember Hall. Great question. Um, yeah, very much an appropriate time. So with this request, we're not, you're right, we're not asking for the full planned portion. Uh, the reason that was not requested initially was because of a staffing reduction we, um, had to make within the department. So we are, with this request, would plan a phased amount of, of what was planned. What we would focus on is the play area itself. Um, as you may recall, this was a park that was transferred to the city from King County. Um, with the transfer, there's some existing play equipment that, that residents placed on it. Um, nice play equipment, but it doesn't meet national playground safety standards in terms of a public park. So we would focus on replacing that play equipment. Uh, we, this, um, project would coincide, um, with the hillside park play equipment scope that we'd be doing as well. So we think from a staffing standpoint, we could, um, handle, um, these projects and the neighborhood engagement that would happen in the separate neighborhoods and find some efficiencies, um, given they're both focused on, um, play equipment. Hope that helps.
Okay, thank you. Um, not seeing any more questions. Oh, sorry. Um, Councilmember Goodman has a question.
Uh, sorry, thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. Um, can you talk more about strategic plan initiative projects? Is this just a, uh, and sort of an earmark of funds that would be used on something that hasn't been identified yet?
Um, I'm gonna call, uh, one of two friends maybe, uh, to, to respond to this one. I'm not sure who wants to take this, whether it's City Administrator Bob Kowitz or Deputy City Administrator Snyder.
Um, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Goodman, can you repeat your question, please?
Yes, sure. So strategic plan initiative projects, $175,000. Um, I wanted to, something more specific about that. And I'm, I'm thinking it's just a, um, reservation of funds for unidentified projects that align with a strategic plan in the area of city leadership and services, but I don't know that.
Um, City Administrator Bob Kowitz, is this something you'd like to, to take the lead on? Um, okay, we have Mayor Polly on the line, and she is, um, able to respond. So Mayor Polly, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not sure if, if Wally's had connection issues or, but, uh, Wally and I have discussed this one item, and I thought I might be able to shed a little light on it. Um, it does not necessarily belong under city leadership and services. It really is a placeholder, as Councilmember Goodman had suggested, for a potential strategic plan initiative that the council may want to consider. So if we were to have a early-in-the-year retreat and be able to true-up our forecast with reality, um, there's an opportunity that the council may select a project to, that can move the needle in one of our other areas. So it's not related to city leadership and services, it really is just a placeholder.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I had a question, uh, on this slide as well. We had, um, earlier presented a pie chart where it had the proposed budget by strategic plan goal. And I wondered, because this says BlackBerry Park is under environmental stewardship as well as infrastructure, I wondered, for the purposes of trying to parse things by strategic plan, is it, is it under infrastructure there?
So, um, the reason why I've got this one flagged, um, under both and similarly on, um, under the Parks Maintenance Manager, that, that was flagged that way as well. For, um, parks, um, items, parks capital items, um, the way they're split on that pie chart is that, um, it's, half of it's in infrastructure and half of it's in environmental stewardship, um, because this is one area that kind of straddles, um, those two priorities. So that's how it's categorized in that pie chart.
Okay, thank you. I am not seeing any more questions.
Okay, so, um, so we'll just walk through a series of, of recommendations for the general fund. I did want to touch on a couple of areas, um, that the administration is recommending that we revisit, uh, in early 2021. Um, the first of which is our utility funds and our water quality capital investments. In those water quality funds, um, Council President Hunt had, um, at the last deliberation session, had talked about two projects in particular, Cabin Creek Tributary, the Cabin Creek Tributary Stabilization Project, as well as the Central Park Bio-Swale Improvements. And we would like to come back after the first of the year with a plan for funding those. Um, in addition, we would like to come back with potentially some additional investments out of the Sustainability Fund, um, based on work of the, um, New Environmental Board. Um, and then last, our real estate excise tax performance, um, it has been performing , um, better than, um, what we had originally forecast. Um, so between that and then if the council does approve the plan to shift some of the street operating costs from REIT onto, uh, the general fund, we may have additional REIT capacity, um, and would, uh, come back, um, with some additional plans, additional capital investments in the REIT fund, um, uh, in early 2021. So I wanted to just acknowledge, um, acknowledge those items. And then, um, next.
Um, Director Goldberg, we do have a question on that slide.
I'm sorry.
Um, and no worries, thanks for, um, for taking a question. So this is, uh, Councilmember Hall has a question.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, super quick, this is Councilmember Zach Hall. By revisiting funding, do you mean consider a budget amendment in early 2021?
Correct. So, so, you know, for, yes, so if, if council were to decide it wanted to do, um, additional investments in these areas, it would, it would come in the form of a budget amendment.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, that, um, that is a summary of, uh, what the mayor is recommending for council consideration and, um, wanted to then provide an opportunity for council to have a discussion about, um, those, uh, recommendations. And, um, we've got a series of questions here, um, that you can use if you so choose to guide your decisions. But, um, the feedback on this will, um, help us inform what to bring back, uh, for, um, adoption on November 16th. And as I mentioned at the outset, um, you know, depending on how the discussions go, um, we also have the backup time on, uh, November 10th. So I'll stop talking.
Um, thank you, Director Goldberg. I did notice, um, you have a few more slides, so would you like to, um, go through those slides and then we can do Q and A? And, um, then we have public comment as well as council direction.
The next slides are mainly next steps in just, um, the, um, the schedule. And the future schedule is very much dependent on how these discussions go about whether more time is needed. So I think this, it makes sense to pause here.
Okay, um, then we'll, we'll go ahead. So, um, council, does council have any questions, um, at this point? And yes, we do. Okay, Councilmember DeMichele has a question.
Thank you, this is Councilmember DeMichele. Uh, Director Goldberg, can you outline for me what the fiscal benefits are if we do cash out on that comp time? And, uh, are there any downsides to doing that? Or is it, um, is it, is it to our benefit to actually take that, um, and do that? Thank you.
Yes, so, so it, it, it would be to our benefit to, to cash these out now, um, in that, um, first of all, we've got, we've got the fund balance available. Um, and secondarily, um, people's salaries grow over time. So, um, normally what would happen, um, is that, um, people would either use the comp time or get the, the cash out of whatever's available upon their departure from the city. So if someone continues to work for the city for another five years, 10 years, however many, however, whatever that period of time is, there's natural growth in their salary over time. So really, it's, um, less expensive to pay it out now than, than to wait on it. So that, that would be the main benefit. And then the other benefit would be just, we don't have, we don't have that liability on our books. And I know that that's been, um, that's been an, an area of, of, um, concern. So, you know, it sort of put a, a closure on that comp time, um, that comp time practice that the city had, had engaged in. Um, and I should also mention that in order to implement this change, it does require, um, a small change of the personnel policies that we will be bringing back, um, for, um, city council approval, um, with some other personnel policy changes on, uh, November 16th.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Hall has a question.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, Councilmember Zach Hall, again, uh, just another, um, clarifying question. So if we were to, um, um, support allocating these additional ongoing and one-time expenditures, looking at the fund balance impact, we would, the undesignated fund balance would be within our target. Is that correct?
That's correct. And it, it, it would, and as was the case with the original proposed budget, it's within the target in those, the first couple of years of the forecast period, we forecast out to 2025. So it's within that, that, um, 15 to 20% range, the first years of the forecast period. Um, in subsequent years, it would be below it. But as we talked about in one of the earlier budget deliberation sessions, um, you know, a lot can change between now and then. And, um, and, um, so it, it, that, that doesn't cause a lot of concerns. Um, and so, you know, there will be opportunities for discuss, to discuss those out years as time goes on.
Okay, thank you. Um, do any other council members have questions? Going once, going twice, okay. Um, so I don't see any other questions. Uh, we do have a public comment opportunity at this point. So, um, city clerk, is, are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item?
Uh, I do not have anyone signed up, but I do see that a hand is raised for one of our callers. So, um, if they'd like to unmute and let us know if, uh, they'd like to make comment.
I should be unmuted.
Yes, we can hear you. Can you state your name?
This is Connie Marsh.
Great, thank you.
Shocking. Uh, okay, this is like a heap of, a heap of slides to try to comment on quickly. So, um, I don't see the all-fired hurry of getting rid of the compensation obligation. I think that is better to be done in a more metered approach, even though we might lose some of our time value of money. Um, we will at least have some money, which is good. Uh, COVID's going up, so we might be shrinking down again, so that makes me more nervous, uh, which is one of the, one of the reasons I can be approaching this the way I am. So, uh, ongoing options, Parks Maintenance Manager, right? So, in theory, we are having several contracts for doing things like weeding and taking care of spaces and things of that sort. So I'm not sure how the Parks Maintenance Manager position is also environmental stewardship. I guess I would rather have people doing the physical work as compared to someone managing. So you would have to explain to me how we would need to be spending this much money on a manager instead of a several doers of things. Concrete maintenance, sure. Um, turf replacement, I don't, uh, that's a luxury sort of at this point in time that we want to pick up, so that is a lower priority. I'm sure that we could do something more important than that. For example, we could potentially work on the, um, utility feature at Central Park that has not been working. Yes, paint the sidewalks, transfer to street operating fund, yeah, that's fine. Um, so, one-time things, Highland Pole repainting, fine. French Street, streetscape, I don't think so. I think we should wait as that feels like a luxury to me. Um, now, if I could, if you told me the, the exacting scope of that, maybe, but I think we would be better off dealing with some things like our stormwater that goes untreated right into Lake Samamish, um, or our infrastructure where it is, uh, safety more than it is convenience. So, there is, there is that game. Uh, actually paying someone to do a contract project management for the TOD, um, I don't know what that means, and no one has asked about it. I know that we are supposed to be having a development agreement coming up with a transfer, or, anyway, that project. But I don't know who we have to write it, because I think that now our Development Services Department is overburdened and understaffed with anyone with the talent to do such things. So, um, I see that we are at a big talent deficit in, in that area that does not, can't be solved by creating a contract position. Uh, I am for additional business grant funding. I don't understand how the BlackBerry Park improvements are also environmental stewardship if you're talking about a kids' play area. Uh, that does not seem to be the same thing to me. So is this, this connecting of parks as always being environmental stewardship? I disagree sort of with the underlying mechanism. So, uh, strategic plan initiative projects as a placeholder, um, no. If you want to propose some of your top priority strategic plan projects that you have in mind, then maybe yes. But just as a placeholder, I would rather just keep the money. And if somebody gets a bright bulb idea that seems like it could be funded, especially with grant funding, then, then we could use some funds to do such a thing, but not as a placeholder for that. Now, um, I, I want to go back now to the discussion of Title 18, because this is all in one big huge blob here. Um, and, uh, so Title 18 is confusing to me, mainly because it seems like we still have a significant staff obligation in Title 18 updates. And then when you look at what Beth says, great job, Beth, by the way, um, that is not a department that doesn't have anything to do. So I don't understand, um, how it is going to have the time to do its work. And I would like to understand the plan, because while I really, really, really want Title 18 updated, I want it done very well. And, and if, um, there's no one with any back knowledge of the city to do it, I have concerns. And there you go. have concerns. And there you go. That's the end of my topics. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Eggers, is there anyone else who is wishing to speak on this topic?
And, thank you. I'm checking to see if there's any other callers on the line who would like to address the council. Please press star three. And I'll pause another moment. And no, I do not see anyone else indicating such. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We also did not receive email comments specific to this informational item this evening. So I have no comments to summarize from, from that front. So now, we can proceed into feedback and discussion deliberation on this topic. The first person wishing to comment is Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Madam Council President. This is Councilmember Mart. So a couple, a thing that kind of crosses several of these questions is, I think we might want to think about two buckets of money as, as kind of special. In the ongoing options, I look at the $235,000 to increase general fund transfer to street operating to reduce, to reduce reliance on REIT. And then I also look at the strategic plan initiative projects, $175,000. So together, they represent about a $400,000 slug of roughly $4 million in, in, in changes. And I wonder, you know, there was, there was talk of maybe doing something in January. I guess, I guess where I'm going with this is, I would like to see a think about those blocks of money as ability to react to things between now and some point early next year. And I'll tell you, I'll tell you, I'll be very transparent. The reason I got, I got thinking about it is, we have enacted very, I think, aggressive changes in the IPD for funding, and how we have removed over hire, which I don't, I'm not sure, it's actually over hire. I'm fine with the, with the proposed IPD budget. But I also said that, at the time, that I would like early next year to see how that's going, right? And see if we need to change anything to make sure that we have the same number of badge officers out on the street that we thought we would. And so I think that these two buckets of money represent an opportunity for council to respond to feedback as we go to implement this large budget. And so I feel like 10% of the total change kind of held in reserve for a little bit. I don't know if January is soon enough. But I think of those as both one-time and ongoing buckets that could be easily directed to respond to changes and, and let's just say unintended consequences of our budget. We're going to find out things early in the next year about our budget and about how it meets our needs. And this would give us some opportunity to respond. I don't know if we need to do anything formally with it. But I, I would be interested to know if others have, have an interest in sort of thinking about that way, having some chunk of this money kind of held in reserve, and not heavily planned for anything, but understanding that it could react. And like I said, full transparency. An example would, of that would be if we were having trouble maintaining our target number of uniformed officers with the, with the changes and how we're going to go about doing hiring. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt, and I wanted to make a comment, because I think it, it segues well at this point. One of the things that I think would be really helpful at this meeting, as I mentioned in good at the order at the last meeting, and as Mayor Polly mentioned in her opening remarks, is that we do have some options here that we could discuss in terms of procedural ways to deal with what is a really substantial change in revenue and substantial, I think, change in expenditures as well at this point in November, when we're close to expected budget adoption. So there's, there's at least three, there's probably more options. But I mean, one is if we are comfortable with the budget with the changes that are presented today, that could be one option. If we are somewhat comfortable but feel we need more time, we could potentially schedule more budget deliberations to work through these items and still adopt the budget on, on the same schedule as originally planned. And then the third option would be something, which it sounds like Councilmember Mart is, is talking about, which would be looking at if there are items that we feel we could deliberate further and make a budget amendment at the beginning of next year, and separate those from items that we think can, that we are comfortable with in adopting, in the coming weeks when we adopt the budget. So I think those are the three options. And it would be helpful if I, it would be helpful to get a sense of where council members are with those three options, I think. Okay. Council Deputy President Ray would like to make a comment.
Well, thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. I wasn't going to comment on it, but I will answer your question. I think that there are some things that we can defer until making a decision on until next year. But I do believe there are some things that are on this list that we might want to consider, including in the 2021 budget, and also, you know, some authorization for 2020 budget. So what I was, what I was thinking when I was listening to Councilmember Mart was that the reserves really are what the ending fund balance is all about. The ending fund balance really represents our reserves. And in these times of uncertainty, and Director Goldberg has certainly made it clear that these are uncertain times, holding slightly more reserves makes me more comfortable than having less reserves for that very reason that Councilmember Mart just pointed out. All that being said, I think there are some things that I, I could be very comfortable that in the proposed one-time and ongoing investments, that I think I could be comfortable moving forward with. I think that, you know, the hardworking employees of the city have made a lot of sacrifices in, in 2020 as a result of Covid. And I would be definitely interested in, in making sure that we make people as whole as, as possible. And then I think that there are some opportunities within some of the other one-term investments for strategic initiatives that also, from my perspective, would make some sense. So I, I'm kind of looking at this notion of a hybrid. I think there are some things that we could include in the 2020 budget, and then others that we might want to defer until early 2021.
Thank you, Council Deputy President Ray. We, so I will go through all the, the council members that would like to make a comment, and then we can do a second or however many rounds of comments. So the next council member for round one comments is Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I view this as sort of a, we had a, we had a, we didn't really have, but I'll pretend we had a Plan A, because at the beginning of the year, we would have had a Plan A, and then Covid hit. And so then we had to come out with our Plan B budget. And then we've had a unexpected surprise with revenue here in August, which gives us a better outlook than we anticipated. And so we get to go back to sort of our Plan A. And I really realize we didn't have a formal Plan A. But if we had had a Plan A, if we had not had a Covid, then we would have a budget that looks like a combination of what Plan B was, plus what we see tonight. We also have our financial policy that says how much we should hold in reserve. And the plan that's presented tonight takes us down to acceptable level, and is also thoughtful in its, in that it's consistent with the city's strategic plan, and also has some expenditures in here that are in line with some of the circumstances, the unusual circumstances that we faced this year, the police accountability plan that we've come up with, and help for businesses. I would, I don't, I would, I don't see any reason that we would want to delay approving a budget that is consistent with our policies, with the exception of potentially what Councilmember Mart's mentioned, which are things that are placeholders, that we would, that we could decide later. I don't think we're ready to make a final decision, because this was just daylighted. I would think we might need another night of deliberations. But I would need to be convinced that there is some reason that we would hold off until next year, when we already have a proposed budget and amendments to that proposed budget, proposed by the administration that's consistent with the plans the city already has, taking into account the circumstances that have come up this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Council President. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. I actually think Councilmember Goodman said it really well there. Oh, and actually, before I forget, I wanted to say to Director Goldberg, I always appreciate the levity that you bring to your presentations. It just makes it fun. So thank you very much, and keep doing what you're doing. Anyways, back to what I was saying. Councilmember Goodman, I thought, brought up some good points. And in previous meetings, I had kind of indicated unwillingness to move forward with adding additional spend, mostly because I wanted to see a list of projects before talking about, you know, how much money we'd be willing to, additional money we'd be willing to spend in the budget. I like what I see, and I like that we still fall within our fund balance goal. I would also lean toward maybe using an additional study session to really chock through this a little bit more. And in addition, I would like to hear response from the administration about some of the community member Connie Marsh's questions, in particular. She brought up potentially a metered approach to comp time. I'd be interested in what administration has to say about that. And then also kind of justification for a maintenance manager as opposed to maintenance work, workers who are actually stewards of the land. So I thought that would be something potentially we could hear in an additional study session, too. So those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Did you, would you like the administration to take a stab at answering those questions? Or would you like to, to revisit that?
Sure, yeah. I mean, if they would like to, and this is appropriate time.
Yep, we can answer, have questions at any time. So City Administrator Bob Quitz, or whoever feels they can best answer that question. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Council President and Councilmember Hall. I, I think the amendments to the comp time is, this is something that's been brought up a couple different times. And we've been very thoughtful about what we can do weighing a couple different factors. First, the liability to the city is never going to be lower than it is now. With every passing year, there are additional wage adjustments, and so that liability goes up. So I think the, the idea of eliminating it sooner than later, given the fund balance that we have, from the administration standpoint, I think that makes sense. We spent quite a bit of time over the last couple of weeks sorting out how much to spread it out. And so with the plan that Director Goldberg outlined this evening, we think that, you know, having that liability off our books at the end of 2022 makes sense, but also providing some flexibility to individual employees to manage how they would have that paid off. So I, I think all of that taken together, we feel very comfortable with this plan. We think it's appropriate for our employees. We think it's appropriate for stewardship of dollars. So I think we stand by that. Certainly happy to answer any other questions that may be with that. Going to the next issue regarding the, the maintenance manager, I'm going to phone a friend and ask Jeff Wotling to come online. I, I think that there's a broader view here. And the broader view is looking at what people move for, what people find as sort of the, one of the elements of being part of our community. And that is enjoying our natural resources, enjoying the many hundreds of acres of parkland, open space, wooded areas that we have. And as I have been talking with Jeff over the last several weeks, as we think about coming out of Covid, this position really bubbled from those conversations. It's not a matter of just managing staff members. And of course, to the, as the council knows, and I'll remind the public, in the mayor's proposed budget, we've already allocated to, bringing back two park maintenance employees to do that day-to-day work. But this position really is meant to take on the broader stewardship issues, likely, as we would advertise for this person, that they would be an arborist by training. And so they would bring a broader view to this. I know I asked Jeff to come online, and I may have stolen much of thunder. Jeff, if you could maybe just elaborate just a little bit, because I think, you know, the discussions that we've been having, looking over the next couple of years, I think help inform the council in its deliberations with all of this.
You bet. City Administrator Bob Quitz, thank you. And echoing those comments, yeah, this, this position would also be a steward of the land. To piggyback off of what was said just now, our parks and open space system is over 1,600 acres. That is a, a significant piece of our public infrastructure that plays a pretty key role in how we define ourselves in livability, in a number of our strategic goals. It is the one piece of infrastructure that does not have a manager overseeing it. It really is a, a talent and a staff deficit, probably the biggest one within our department. So as Wally shared, through our conversations, I, you know, this position is needed to provide that direction to those staff on the ground. Certainly, some of our endeavors these last couple of years in expanding our partnerships and our roles, either with contracted maintenance and/or partnered maintenance, just like this work with Forterra and Green Issaquah. We, we make do without this manager position, but this manager position really becomes that park operations professional who can provide guidance, who can collaborate, can bring together a resource management plan, can fill a number of the gaps that, again, this city has, has done for the last 12 years. But I would say our level of service has been impacted without this position for that long. And as was shared before, I think one of the values of this position and bringing that specific professional guidance and manager level position to this infrastructure, just like we have with, whether it's street infrastructure or our utility infrastructure, to, to allow that facility manager to go back to providing full-time facility management to our buildings and our building square footage would also be something to consider. And, and again, a reason for this request. And again, just seeing the importance of our parks and open space and trails, and the role it plays now, the role it will play in the future. This would not just be a desk jockey. This is, this is a, an important position to also help us be best stewards of, of the land. That was a great answer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Walsh would like to make a comment.
Thank you. So I have a lot of thoughts on this. Basically, going back kind of to the way that Councilmember Goodman addressed this as, hey, I see this as an expansion, or as a set of what we would have done in a normal budget time. That's the way that I see the kind of items that were categorized for one-time expenses for the restoring, the reductions. When I calculate all of that out, based on the slide, it's about $1.5 million. And so seeing that- And so, seeing that, I'm like, okay, makes sense. We're talking about pavement management and the Highlands Pole repainting and, you know, things there that I think we had talked about. When we get into the one-time options and the new investments, that's where I'm starting to see things that it doesn't feel like it's just a continuation of things that we've talked about. The asset management program, project management for the TOD, strategic plan initiative projects, these just aren't things that we have discussed as policies and the direction that we want to go. So, I would have a really hard time looking at that portion of things, which is about $1.4 million, and signing off on it. I'm particularly concerned about concepts of like the strategic plan initiative projects and that like earmarking money when I feel like that's what our general fund is for. If, if we need to make a budget amendment next year because we come up with a plan for a project that has community, you know, feedback and interest, then great. We make a budget amendment and we decide to use that out of general fund. But as it goes now, we're in a tight financial situation, and just because we got more money doesn't mean that I feel comfortable making these, making these kind of payments and expenses. So, beyond that, the $1 million in ongoing expenses, I think those sound like they're areas that we were interested in doing that got cut back, so I feel comfortable with that. The comp time, I'm supportive of the administration's revised plan on this because future wage increases are going to mean this is just going to cost us more in the future. Now that we've identified the problem, let's handle it in a smart way. And so, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember De Michelle has a comment.
Thank you. This is Councilmember De Michelle. The way that the options were laid out for us by President, Council President Hunt, I think I'm most comfortable with option number three. Looking at the list of proposed expenditures, there's many there that I think are really good ideas that I could support without any problem. But I agree that I think we should be a little more conservative. And so, I agree with Councilmember Mart's suggestions that we take a look at the strategic plan initiative projects. And I believe the other one that he was suggesting were the increased general fund transfers to street operating and perhaps hold back on those. And I agree that that gives us some flexibility in the, going into the new year. Again, the COVID rate is going up. It's going up dramatically. I was in a meeting this afternoon, listening to a report from Patty Hayes. We are at the highest level of COVID right now than we have been through this entire pandemic. And so, we don't yet know the consequences of that. And I think it would be prudent for us to hold some money back and have that ready for us and wait and see what is going to happen in 2021. So, option number three sounds the best to me. And then finally, if my fellow council members are interested in having an additional deliberation, I could support that. And that would give the administration perhaps the opportunity to come back and give us more details about some of the proposed expenditures. And perhaps I would change my mind after listening to that. I don't think that we've had enough time and enough detail on some of the proposed expenditures to maybe really feel comfortable with, with the entire plan. So, that's where I'm kind of landing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I think all council members have, have given round one comments. And so, I think we are ready now to go back around. The first person in round two comments is Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Madam Council President. This is Councilmember Mart. Couple things. On the question of setting aside a specific amount of money to be revisited next year versus, you know, just putting it back in the general fund because it's, general fund is reserved, I do think there, I do think it's different. I think it's, if you, if you, if you set aside an amount and you say, this is an amount we're going to consider at some time, whether it's January or February or March, I think you're basically saying, we're looking at it now and we're comfortable down the road that this is a magnitude that we think, you know, we would be comfortable looking at that down the road. I think if you put it back into a general fund of $10 million or $15 million or whatever the exact amount is, you know, it's a different thing to crack open that, that, that piggybank, right? And say, we're going to, we're going to look at taking some money out of the piggybank. Is it $400,000? Is it $4 million? What is it? And so, I, I do think they're different options. And, and so, that's why I like the idea of setting aside a certain amount and saying, we've got, we've got this change, this $4 million change. We want to give it back. Here's part of it also. We want to give it back to the people. I feel very strongly about hitting our financial targets and not holding excess reserve. And so, we're saying, this is money that should go back to people. We just don't know how we want to spend it yet. So, I, I would very much like to set, set those monies aside. Of course, an additional day. The most important thing that we do as a body is approve a budget for the year. And so, voters of a certain age may remember, Ernest and Julio Gallo, we will sell no wine before it's time. We will pass no budget before it's time. I am enthusiastic to spend more time with my fellow council members discussing this budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We actually don't have any other council members signed up at this time, but I do have a few comments. So, one is I heard from my fellow council members, a desire to talk about this more. It sounds like some of us think that potentially an additional budget session would be adequate, and then some that aren't sure. If it would be adequate, I, I think I'm also unsure. I, looking at this and to use the sort of analogy that Councilmember Goodman used, I think there are things here that are Plan A, the original plan that we would have, that we would have used, such as, I think, the Highlands Pole repainting, you know, something we know we have to do. It's an operations maintenance thing. If we don't do it, we have to do it later, and the poles rust, and that causes more problems. So, there's some things like that. And then there are some things that are kind of like a new plan because we're in a new circumstance, but they are new. And so, you know, the additional business grant funding, the landlord-tenant mediation, which we talked about, those are new. TOD, OC, contract management, yes, contract project management, those are, those are new. So, I think for those new things, that's, that's really where my need for more deliberation is because I don't think that we've, in my opinion, I don't think we fully understand those items because we're seeing them for the first time. My other comment is, I think when we, I appreciate, I appreciate that this very much tries to align with both our financial policy of having our target amounts in reserves. I appreciate that very much. And I also appreciate that it is aligning with the strategic priorities. But I think when we align with the strategic priorities, it's very important that they truly align because the strategic plan is so broad and it really, things can fit into those categories. So, I think we have to be deliberate about that, especially if we're saying, this is how much money we're funding this part of the strategic plan. And I also agree that the BlackBerry Park investment, which is for play equipment, does not align with the environmental stewardship strategic plan goals. And so, I think we just need to be really careful when we say this project fits into this part of the strategic plan because the plan is broad and things can be fit into it different ways. But I think we need to be very intentional with that. Okay, so, that's my comment. And we have a comment at this time from City Administrator Bob Quitz.
Yes, thank you, Council President Hunt, members of the council. Appreciate very much the feedback. I think based on what I've heard this evening, we will be able to come back with, with the information that you're looking for. I, I think in, in conversations with Mayor Polly, we'll be able to bring you back some adjustments, I think that will make sense for what the council's looking for. We have a study session scheduled for next week, which will, has time on that study session for additional deliberations. So, my recommendation would be is that we come back at that meeting and at that time provide some additional information. And I think we might hope that we can bring this, these issues to a resolution so that the council then can adopt the budget on the 16th of November.
Thank you, City Administrator Bob Quitz. I did have a question regarding what you just said. Would there, November 16th is not too far away. If council were to wish to have an additional budget deliberation, I think that might be a possibility. So, that would have to be on a non, an unusual day for a council. But would that be an opportunity?
Certainly. But, but, but we imagine that you'll have a couple of hours on next week at your meeting on the 10th.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Councilmember Goodman has a comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So, my follow-up comment is not probably too far off than what Councilmember Mart said in that the budget is one of the most important things that we do, if not the most important thing. And this is kind of where the rubber meets the road. I haven't heard anything, I, sorry, I haven't heard anything tonight that makes me think that we should set aside or not, some, set aside some huge amount of money and wait until next year and decide, other than the smaller amount than Councilmember, that Councilmember Mart talked about, to address some potential uncertainties and to make a decision on a potential strategic plan initiative. The one new item was the TOD contract and Parks Maintenance Manager, which was explained tonight, we can certainly talk about it more. Business grants and mediation are not something that I would be interested in delaying. Those are COVID-related. They're extremely important. And I just haven't heard anything tonight that makes me think that we ought to delay because we want to think that we've only heard these things, this proposal, tonight. This is kind of, like I said, where the rubber meets the road. Now, it's time to roll up our sleeves and deliberate over another meeting or two, or however many meetings we need to deliberate. And if it's the proposal, if there are items in the proposal that each one of us disagrees with, then it is our job as council members to propose something else and deliberate that among our council members. And if the proposal by one or more people is to take a certain amount and delay till next year, then that can be deliberated, too. But I, I would have to be convinced to do that. This is part of our job, and it's our job now to deal with new circumstance. So, I'm hoping that we have another meeting. And if we need another meeting after that, fine. But we have a budget to pass. And if it takes a lot of time to do it, that's our job to do it and get it done this year. But again, I haven't heard anything that makes me believe that we need to somehow delay thinking about how we're going to spend a whole bunch of extra money that we've gotten and learned and just heard about until next year. We have a lot of questions, and that's fine. But I would encourage us to just get our job done. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Goodman. Okay, Councilmember Mart.
Thank you. I am honestly slightly confused, and I, I would, I'm not sure. I think, aren't we all talking about having one or two more council meetings and then approving a budget? And then that budget, we can argue about whether we want to set aside some money that, we can argue in the next one or two council meetings whether we want to set aside, whether we want that budget that we approved to set aside a certain amount of money that we will use to review early next year. I, I don't, I'm, I'm honestly not thinking I heard anybody argue otherwise. I completely agree that, that we should do our job, which is to approve a budget and everything that we've been talking about for the last two or three meetings, we should, in the next one or two meetings, put to a vote and see what we want to do. So, if, I would love to have some clarity on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Councilmember Goodman would like to respond.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I just heard a few comments that made me think that, that there was a possibility that there was an interest in waiting because some of this was new and holding a significant amount back. And that has me concerned. That's all.
Okay. Councilmember Walsh has a comment.
This is Councilmember Walsh. I will say, I am kind of uncomfortable with some of these additional costs. And so, yes, I want to hear more about it. Yes, I want to deliberate, but I also want us to have on the table the fact that we're pulling money out of our general fund. Sorry about the cat. And so, you know, any additional spend that we do here because we got new revenue is still money coming out of our general fund. So, I, I think we need to consider that as part of, part of the deliberations, not just, hey, we have more money. It's, hey, we have more money, but we're still taking money from the general fund. So, that's the only part that I think we need to keep in mind during deliberations.
Councilmember De Michelle would like to make a comment.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember De Michelle here. I just want to clarify in case it was comments that I made, that I'm aiming towards budget adoption on November the 16th. I think that we could deliberate and, and hammer this out and get it done and, and adopt it on November the 16th. So, just clarifying in case anything I said was misconstrued. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. I'm not seeing any other comments. So, this is Council President Hunt. I will also clarify that in all three options, the budget, there will be a budget that is adopted in all three options that I put forward on November 16th. So, yeah. It's just a matter, I think, of what, you know, I think maybe different council members see these items differently in terms of the buckets that they fall into where, you know, things that we need to deliberate more and better understand versus things that we understand or have been in the CIP, for example, and are comfortable with and don't need to discuss. So, I think there's, there's some probably differences there, but the adoption of a budget, November 16th, will, is in all the plans. Okay, so, I am not seeing any other council members wishing to chat, or in the chat, wishing to comment. I'll give up one more minute, though. Okay, still not seeing anybody. So, City Administrator Bob Quitz, you have what you need. We didn't, we didn't maybe address all of the, the items individually that are on the screen.
No, but I, I, I think from the council's deliberations, I have a pretty clear understanding of where I'd like to go. So, Mayor Polly and I will weigh the discussion this evening, and we will have, absolutely have a, a plan for the council's consideration next week.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Any other final comments on this from any council members? Not seeing any. So, this is a special meeting, so we do not- So, um, this is a special meeting, so we do not have a good-of-the-order item on our agenda. Um, so the last item on our agenda will be adjournments, there being no further business. So this meeting would then be adjourned at 10:00 PM.